Good evening. Welcome to the February twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty-three Education and People's Services and Finance and Operations Committee in person and virtual meetings. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Dr. McGary, before we call tonight's meeting to order, would you please outline the public participation procedure, sir?
Yes, we're President Brown. Just for those who are in the audience and those who are participating virtually, a couple adjustments tonight. We are move and have moved. It was on the agenda. The Education and People's Services to go before Finance and Operations. It's an informational session, and we have students here. We want to make sure that they can get home tonight to study for tomorrow. So we want to get them out of here as quickly as we possibly can. If you want to participate into tonight's evening, we have several ways to do so. Obviously, for those who are participating in person, the Board will review the agenda items for this evening, answer questions of each other and of the administration, and go back and forth. And when they feel like they have had that conversation, they will then open it up to the public. Same thing will go for those who are attending virtually. For those who are in person, please come to the microphone, provide your name and address, and the specific agenda item on the report this evening that you would like to comment on or question. Tonight, they are committee meetings, so the Board will take questions and comments. If there are questions, they will either, the Board will answer themselves or direct those questions to the appropriate administrator to provide the best answer. That will take place as well for the Finance and Operations Committee that will be following Education and People's Services this evening. If you're someone who's participating virtually, virtual participation will happen after all in-person participation takes place. Virtual participation, you can send, can you hear me? Is this still, okay, back a little bit, sorry. You can participate by sending in questions or comments to boardmeetingcomments@upperdarbysd.org. You can also provide a phone call at six one zero seven eight nine seven D two hundred, extension two thousand. If you're either emailing or providing a phone message, please provide your name and address and clearly state which agenda item you'd like to comment on or question. We will read that before closing out those specific reports and agenda items for the evening. I'm happy to review that again before we go forward tonight.
Please do at your discretion.
Thank you.
The meeting of the Education and People's Services Committee will please come to order. The district posted this evening's agenda to Board docs at least twenty-four hours prior to the commencement of this meeting. Is there a motion to approve that previously posted agenda? Are there any amendments to offer?
We're President Brown. Just since we switched it, and it's my fault, I apologize. We would have to do roll call for this agenda. Typically, it would have been for Finance and Operations, so I apologize.
Okay. So we'll have to do roll call, not just a consensus vote, each person, okay. So to approve that revised agenda, we'll do roll call. David? Oh, okay. Okay, sorry. Roll call, please. Mr. Rogers.
Dr. Hague.
Present.
Mr. Des Noiers.
Present.
Mr. Neal.
Present.
Mr. War Savage.
Present.
Ms. Murphy Mercy.
Present.
Ms. Williams.
Present.
Ms. Mitchell.
Present.
Mr. Fields.
Present.
Mr. Brown.
Present. Sorry for scrolling by the roll call. I'm sorry. All right, so now we'll do a vote for the revised agenda. Agenda has been moved in a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, please signify by saying aye opposed and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstained and state your name for the record. The motion carried. I will now turn over the Education and People's Services Committee Agenda to Co-Chair, Mr. Neal.
Thank you, President Brown. Dr. Kelly, could you please begin with an overview of your agenda items this evening?
Absolutely. Good evening, everyone. So tonight, we have two items on our agenda. The first item being the Upper Darby High School Community Pride Through Youth Mentorship, which is an informational item. Dr. Alloway is here with a group of our high school students who is going to present this mentorship program. Following that, the second item are our policies for this evening. So at this time, I, if I can, turn it over to the students and Mr. Alloway.
Yeah, I just wanted to make a comment that when we had our agenda setting meeting, that I was very excited to see this presentation tonight, so I'm very excited. I've been looking forward to this like all month. So, yeah, let's, let's do it.
Okay, I'm gonna back away, so we have some room at this table.
Dr. Alloway, as you get everybody set up, I think someone should take the responsibility to hold, almost like there's a TV, and the person who feels best with the remote control to help move the slides, you know. I, you'll be shocked to know that I like to control the remote control.
Sounds good. Can you hand me the mouse, please? I'll take, I'll take the control. I like to hold the remote control as well. All right. You guys ready? All right, thank you. All right, Dr. McGary, thanks for introducing us, for President Brown, Brown, the entire school board, the public who's watching, and everybody who's here tonight. Ms. Sims, for coming from our Family Consumer Services Department, thank you. I'm gonna start and introduce our Community Pride Through Youth Mentorship Program. I'm just gonna get into the very beginning of this and a little bit about who we are and where we've been, and then I'm gonna turn the microphone over to the students who are going to present the bulk of this presentation tonight. So, I almost nodded to whoever had the remote. You have to watch this presentation and subscribe to what we believe, okay? The first and foremost is that we firmly believe that student engagement in school is the key to improvements in school climate and school safety, period. We also believe that through this program, we can create a project here that improves our teacher pipeline. We believe that the mentorship program that we're gonna present tonight is mutually beneficial to not only the person who's doing the mentoring, but also to the mentee. So a little bit about who we are and where we've been. This is just a small, a small part of the larger student group. We have students who are in all grades, nine through twelve. We meet weekly with key stakeholders here at the high school, and that includes Dr. McGary, Mrs. Simone, and myself, sometimes more than, more than weekly. The biggest questions that we've been trying to unlock this year are, from the student's lens, what do you want to see at your school? What can improve your school? And we have talked about literally everything, everything at school. But the biggest thing is about engagement, about pride in our school, about kids staying connected, about the teachers that are working with the kids every single day. And so that's, that's what we're here to talk about, our answer to those pressing questions. We have reviewed everything. We've talked about the larger concerns facing school systems, locally, at the state level, and also nationally. Locally, we've talked about the things that we see in our school. There's a Teacher Action Research Group that talks about staff retention and school climate. We've reviewed the notes from their meetings and from their work through last year and through this year. We've talked about the things that we feel would make our school safe. Conversations have included talking about weapon detection systems, talking about students wearing ID badges and presenting them as soon as they arrive to school, talking about increasing the number of school security guards, or even armed guards, talking about the consequences that students face when they're at school. We have talked about what works. We focused on the trauma and neurologic initiative. We've talked about student-led youth courts and restorative practices. We've also, on a local level, had representatives from our group visit schools. We have visited schools in Southeast Delco, in Redding. We've talked with administration in Coatsville School District. All schools trying to answer some of the questions about how do we make people, teachers and students and parents feel safe and connected in school. So we've had those site visits, and we've also talked about some of the larger scale things. We've talked about Newport News, Virginia. We talked about Uvalde, Texas, and all of the reactionary kind of measures that schools are being kind of forced into in response to major and catastrophic issues at school. We came up with a mentoring program, and then now I'm gonna just pass it off, as I said, to our students who are gonna present. So Ryan Hensar?
Hi, my name is Ryan Hensali, and I'm an eleventh grader at Upper Darby High School. I'm a member of the representative student group that's been meeting weekly, and I'm grateful for the opportunity to speak here today. As a group, we have spent a lot of time discussing safety and security concerns, along with a staffing crisis impacting schools nationwide, but especially in Upper Darby. After conversation and research, we are proposing a mentorship program, a future educators program, a digital citizenship curriculum, and a teen and police service academy in order to tackle these issues. The objective of the mentorship program we are proposing is to identify students who are interested in teaching and give them an opportunity to obtain field experience by mentoring students. We want to create a clear pathway for these students to become teachers in our district, enriching students with teaching experience in high school, earning an industry-recognized credential in education fundamentals with district support, and supporting them through college. We believe mentoring will diminish unwanted incidents in our school by fostering community pride. We also believe that membership will build and diversify our teaching staff, addressing staffing shortages. Before providing students with mentorship field experience, we propose a prerequisite mentorship course in order to ensure mentors are properly equipped with the tools needed to mentor students. Units of study will include trauma, restorative practices, digital citizenship, recognizing and reporting child abuse, and for first aid and education fundamentals with a district-provided industry credentials exam.
Hi, my name is Tamvir. I'm a senior here at Upper Darby High School. The mentorship course would serve as a prerequisite to better prepare students for field experience, but the internship itself would provide a hands-on experience to students in any position, for any position in our school district to get a better knowledge of how our school district operates. This mentorship field experience would not limit students to classrooms, but the experience itself differs from our future educators program by expanding students' experiences and serves as a pathway for those wanting to be a part of the future educators program. And field experience kids would be also, would also be paid once we identify as twenty-four future educators.
Hello, my name is Samagorfa. I'm both a part of this student advisory group, and I'm also one of the student school board representatives. So with that being said, while the future educators program is in progress, our current goal and first step towards kickstarting this program is to identify twenty-four students, Upper Darby seniors, who are interested in a career in teaching and hiring them as classroom assistants in our kindergarten center. They would simultaneously pursue college credit towards a teacher education program while doing this. To expand on this, we then plan to create a pipeline to paid classroom assistants that would then follow the path to becoming Upper Darby School District teachers. Alongside that, we also want to create a mentorship program for students who exhibit qualities of a mentor, including students who want to become teachers, coaches, and guidance counselors.
Hi, my name is Kalid Dulot. I am a twelfth grader at Upper Darby High School. I'm part of the student advisory group and part of the, and thankfully, I am one of the student board representatives. This career path doesn't only start in our high school, but it starts down in the middle school levels. We implemented a sixty-course plan to, that shows sixth, seventh, and eighth graders sixty different career paths, and we hope to find some of these students to be interested in any of these sixty career paths. And one of the career paths being a teacher, if any of these students leaving eighth grade have interest in following and becoming a teacher, they would follow the first pathway, and oncoming, oncoming ninth graders would meet with their counselors and roster child development as one of their first classes. And then during their tenth grade year, they would roster preschool lab. After that, they would roster PFE education and/or the mentoring course. And during their senior year, they would finally take the future educators program and do enroll at DCCC with an internship. And for those students who don't know what they, what they have planned after eighth grade year, and I know it's a very, very daunting thing to think about, and especially to put yourself into a course straight away. Some of these students don't, don't have an idea what they want to do straight at eighth grade, and they continue to, they continue to study throughout their ninth and tenth grade year. If teachers or coaches or any, any staff identify them as somebody who is a good mentor or a good, a good model, and they've known, and they're known to guide people and help people, they would suggest for them to take the mentoring course and follow into FEP. And they would meet, if they, if the student shows interest, they would show, go up, go to the counselor and meet with them to roster a mentoring course. And the mentoring course doesn't, again, it doesn't mean that you would become a teacher. You can become a, you can become a coach. You can become a social worker. You can become a teacher as well. But this mentoring course is meant to show kids that it's possible to become a teacher, become an educator in our school district. And even outside of becoming an educator, it's good to have this experience if you're going into something that requires leadership. And through, through DCCC, these students, both on both pathways, would get certifications, and they would have a, a experience through both becoming an educator or anything else within our school district.
So as for right now, our current plan is, as of spring twenty twenty-three, our current Upper Darby High School students will complete an interest survey to identify their interests and abilities in working with ELL students, children, special needs, and other specialized areas of mentorship. And then we would then use this information to identify mentors for different field placements.
At this time, we would like to explore the best practices when it comes to youth-supporting youth mentorship programs. We recognize that we already have trauma-informed practices, restorative justice, and other mental health resources, but we want to make sure this also includes other opportunities that mentorship programs may afford to us.
We want to ensure that mentors are good role models to students and can foster community pride. We decided the best way to do this is through an application process. Students in their sophomore year could write a short interest essay about education and/or community service. These students can then be interviewed by administrators. All students would be checked for grade and discipline, grades and discipline, and a teacher recommendation can help vouch for these students' characters. A district-funded background check and criminal clearances will also be required before students can become mentors. In order to gather interest in this program, we also proposed the following communication plan: making a video highlighting the program and displaying these videos to students during course selection, sending these videos to students and parents, and promoting it via district social media. We would also, we are also interested in hosting an in-person workshop, possibly during school, an event for, in order to present this program and answer any questions that prospective applicants may have.
So of course, with all this being said, there would be financial implications to implementing this program. So we would potentially, potentially, potentially need to budget for staff that would develop the curriculum, child abuse and criminal clearances for students, staff for the mentorship elective program, an RFP to develop the program, potential transportation costs for students to travel to and from schools, and potentially, potentially paying or reimbursing tuition for students who will teach at Upper Darby in the future.
When discussing, when discussing safety and security concerns at schools, we came to an understanding that a lot of incidents can be rooted to social media usage, which can encourage impulsive behavior. We also understand that the impacts of poor social media usage can be detrimental and permanent. We decided that it's in the district's best interest to embed digital citizenship into the curriculum, incorporating it, incorporating it into the middle school, high school, and in the high school, and in the high school mentoring elective. We believe that mentors are especially well-equipped with digital citizenship teaching, since they may be more familiar with social media usage and would be in a better position to explain this to their peers.
Thanks, everybody. There were a lot of things that are part of this program and part of this presentation that are ideas and future considerations. Among them is, earlier in the year, for those who have been paying attention to the committee and board meetings, we introduced a program where EMT and fire safety could be taught to students as a possible career path. Among the, the promising practices that exist out there are this teen and police service academy, which is a single course that bridges academy, which is a single course that bridges the gap between our teenagers and the community and the police and law enforcement in the community. Part of what we talked about in mentoring and prepping our mentors is that teaching of digital citizenship, which again is a kind of a constant in terms of the risks that youth will take and the mistakes that we sometimes find them making, and sometimes law enforcement-involved incidents. So we want to make sure that we push this out as a potential part of this program, as a future consideration, which will lead me to my next slide. Here is what we're asking for tonight. We want to, as a group, obtain your approval to move forward with this project. Obviously, we have to iron out all of the details and build this. We would ask that we have permission to explore the costs associated with the future educators program. We are asking for an RFP to develop the mentoring program. We want to continue, I mentioned earlier that the student group talked about student ID systems. We want to continue to investigate school student ID systems. Some of the technology that's available to us that we want to investigate includes ID systems that give us visitor management, but also on-campus site management of our student population. Some student ID programs actually take and record live attendance throughout the day and give us a complete and clear picture of who's on campus and who is where. And we also want to expand upon that teen and police program, the TAPS program that was part of our last slide. So we would be asking for permission or for your go-ahead to develop a comprehensive program presentation for a future board meeting, perhaps in March. Thank you.
Dr. Alockway and students that are here, blown away, I know how much time and effort you've put into this, I know how many conversations we've had, some strongly opinionated conversations back and forth, and we haven't left anything not discussed here as a group and as a team. I know some of you were nervous about tonight, but you did a phenomenal job presenting yourselves and really protecting what you think is important. And I want to make it clear that when we had these conversations, I expressed to you as the superintendent my fears, what keeps me up at night, and kind of gave you this worst-case scenario, best-case scenario. And a lot of you pushed back on how it would make you feel if this school had weapons detections or metal detectors and things in place. Khalid, you were strong about it. Tanvir, you were strong about it. Ryan, Salma, or other friends that are in the back were very opinionated about this. And we had some good back and forth. And what really was impressive is when we brought up this idea, when I said, "What about mentorship and youth and getting our youth involved?", you all believed that that's the key to building this pride in the community. And you did this homework. Tanvir, you've emailed schools. Ryan, you've gone out there and looked at applications and an application process. Salma and Khalid, we constantly have these conversations. You did your homework on the best practices. You put this presentation together after going back and forth how to fine-tune it. And part of that is to help this mentorship. Whether you recognize it or not, it's also mentoring you that now you know what it takes to try to get something to this moment. It doesn't happen overnight. None of this will happen overnight. It's a marathon to get this forward. What we're asking the board tonight to do is, will you allow us to take this to the next step? Right? Not that they're approving anything tonight, that they're simply saying, "We have some more homework to do, we want to bring it to you in March and April." But we do want to know if you have any feedback for us, criticisms or otherwise. But we believe that the way we're going to build pride in this school district is through our youth. It's easy to be reactionary. And maybe I'll have egg on my face, which I hope I never do. I know that I have some folks that are here in the audience that I've had some good conversations with too, as parents, and I promise that on this night, this evening, when this presentation was made, I would make my stance known. I think moving in the direction of weapons detections and metal detectors and those types of things are reactionary, unfortunate steps that school districts have to take. I hope that we're never in a situation that that becomes the first line of defense. I think this board has an obligation to review all possible scenarios. This board has never said yes or no to any of those things, and they would never do it behind closed doors. And so tonight, I appreciate your patience in bringing forward, as kids, what you want our schools to look like, and that this is what we're exploring, this is what's on the table. And those other options right now are not at the forefront of our decision-making. And I want to thank you for being strong with me in our conversations at our meetings. And you are extremely impressive. I see you smiling back there, all of you, even though Khalid was late twice today. We're okay with it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Alockway, for the presentation. And thank you, students, for coming in tonight and presenting this. I think it's a wondrous, unique opportunity that we find our school district in, and I really look forward to seeing this developed. And to operate a school district this size, we need more than just teachers. And we saw the program of the TAPS program, and that really helps us outside the community with resource officers as well inside our school district. We also need carpenters, plumbers, electricians. And there's so many programs that our school district can touch and help alleviate some of the hiring issues, so that way, when students walk into our buildings, they're receiving a world-class education. And that's what we're striving for. And I truly appreciate the time and effort that you put into this. I know you've probably decided, "I can't watch Outer Banks tonight, I gotta watch, I gotta do this tonight." I've been watching Outer Banks, so that's why I mentioned it. So thank you so much for putting this time and energy. And I would like to open it up to the other board members if they have any comments for the students or for Dr. Alockway. President Brown?
Thank you, Dr. Neal. I'm impressed. I was really impressed with your presentation of what you came up with. And I love the priorities you selected to be a part of the mentoring program. So it shows us what's important to you guys. So that's what we should be working on. Our priority should be your priority. So your list is comprehensive and it seems like it's well-thought-out. Neurologic and trauma and digital citizenship, restorative practices, first aid, all those things are priorities and very important, so I'm really impressed with your list. And then one of the things you touched on, and I just want to make sure I heard that correctly, was that no matter what path you go into, even if you don't want to become an educator, like if you wanted to become an engineer, which I think is probably a good profession, that this would be a good program to pursue no matter what path you choose. Is that correct? Is that what I heard? Okay. Okay. Yes.
Yes, it definitely would be.
Okay. Thank you very much. That's all I have.
Thank you, President Brown. Director Mitchell?
I just want to say how impressed I am with all of you also. I think this might be a first, since we've been on this board, that we've had students up here who have come with a clear and concise and researched plan. I'm sure they had some adult mentors too. Don't discount the adults. But we appreciate all the hard work that you've put into this. And I just want to remind everyone that at committee meetings, we're doing the work of the board. We don't always move everything forward, but we often do, right? But this is the time, this is the opportunity to bring things to the table. And it's really the only opportunity that the board has to review what the administration and the students are planning. And ultimately, we have to approve the spending and the thought process and things like that. So it's a really important time to come to the board, and I think this was a really, really, really awesome example of student advocacy and can carry you through into your adult life. Because there's going to be things in whatever community or workplace that you choose to live or work in, that your boss is going to ask you, "Okay, well, you're not happy with something? Well, what is your plan?"" So I just want to say, good job, and I hope this experience stays with you for a long time. And I'm looking forward to seeing what the future holds with all of your plans and suggestions. You're going to be potentially impacting generations of children. So thank you.
Thank you, Director Mitchell. Director Des Noiers?
Thank you, Director Neal. I also would like to commend the four of you for the quality of your presentation, for the work and creative thinking that went into the proposal you have given us. And I would also like to thank very much the mentors and the students involved in this project who are not sitting before us. I believe you have presented the sketches of a number of very promising ideas that, in my opinion, are worthy of further development. And I happen to especially like the digital citizenship course aspect of this, as I think it's easy for many of us, adults and young people, to forget that, you know, once something is posted to social media or the internet more generally, it never goes away. And that, hopefully, thinking positively can be a good thing, but unfortunately, it can also have negative consequences, both immediate and long into the future. So I appreciate the fact that you recognize this, and this is very clearly a solution that was developed or proposed by the group most closely connected to the, I won't say problem of social media, but the issue of social media or the topic of social media. So I appreciate all those things. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Director Des Noiers. Director Williams?
Thank you. And thank you for your willingness to come out and present to us. I was impressed. I'm not easily impressed, I got to tell you. So thank you so much. Are you up for questions? You can answer it, or Dr. Alockway can answer it, either one. I just have two questions. I noticed that you put on your slide that this provides value to the students being mentored, but also to the mentees, so I was wondering if you can tell me what value it's going to provide to the mentees. And then two, do you already have an idea, or not you, but maybe the administrators, already consulted some teachers that you said from the kindergarten center that you might send? Have you already consulted teachers about this or onboarded?
So to address the first question of what benefit this has to the mentees, other than these mentors being able to help them academically, we also think it'll be really impactful for these students to have a good role model in their lives, which our application process would ensure that all these mentors are good role models to the mentees. Answer your question.
A bit, so, yes, but how will the teachers benefit from mentoring the students as well?
So I want to be clear about something. This is really what's, I think, a part of a key ingredient to this. This is a youth-to-youth. So as much as we're going to have, as Salma presented, a separate 24 students we're trying to identify now to be teachers for next year to work with the kindergarten, hypothetically, we're working that out. What we really talked about is that this mentorship program is going to be overseen by high school administration and teachers, but the students are really going to be working with kids in the elementary, middle school, and high school. They're going to be mentoring the youth. That's really where it is, what we're really focusing on, because in conversations together, while we do want to have that adult part too, which is a really good question, we really focused this presentation on how can we make our school pride and safety and community get better? And in our conversations, this group felt that students mentoring other students and supporting them. Tanvir works in the PFE program here at the high school. She mentors and tutors young children already. She can speak the language of students, and that's helping break down some of those barriers. So when we had that conversation, I'm like, "Holy cow, we can use this and build our own teacher pipeline at the same time." And so that's where that was. To be honest with you, the other part of what your question is, the adult and student part, that is going to get fleshed out more so when we assign the students to work with those teachers, and we do think there'll be value in that. But the primary focus on this was children working with children was really the focus.
Great, thank you.
The second part of that is, we have met with teachers, guidance counselors, and folks here at the high school to process through this. We do think, and I think it's what we have these conversations, we don't want this to be another situation where if we do assign someone to a teacher, it's extra work for the teacher. So the other key part to this is the courses that we talked about developing and what the students are saying that they like to see in it, that's got to be a pretty rigorous course, that when they leave that mentorship course, that they're ready to go and they know what is expected in those classrooms. So we talked about, Dr. Alockway in particular deserves a tremendous amount of credit with Mrs. Simone for helping run these meetings with us, we may have to start small to get big. We don't want to overextend and then fall on our face. This is a marathon, so there's going to be trial and error and trial and error until we get it right, but we can't quit on it. And so we talked about the idea that we may have to start smaller and then build on those experiences and get feedback from everybody involved in what we can and can't do. That's why Tanvir was like, "Look, maybe we should go out and get some experts." So she reached out to some schools, came up with an RFP conversation. We actually reached out to North Penn, who has done some kind of a gifted mentorship program. That principal, if you're listening, shout out to you, emailed us right back. Tanvir sent the email. It was pretty cool to network that way. So I think we'll build that part of it. The adult part is a key piece, but we also think that we can get the students on board that will help us.
Does that answer all your questions, Director Williams?
It does, thank you.
All right, perfect. Thank you for your comments and questions. Director Lamar Morrissey? Lamar Murphy?
Thank you. I just wanted to echo everyone else's sentiments. I was very proud to hear your presentation tonight. I would just recommend that you guys add that to your portfolio for college, because you came up with a very good plan to solve one of the biggest problems in the nation right now. Thank you.
And also, they can add it to the resume when they apply to Upper Darby, right? Okay. Did you want to make a comment on that? Yeah, please. And those are movable. You can move it.
I just want to say thank you so much for all the opportunities you guys have given us to just speak our mind, to solve issues that are happening within our own school district. And like how Dr. McGarry said, this is a marathon, and we're hitting the ground running, and we're not stopping. Because this has been a struggle ever since my freshman year, walking through those doors, knowing that this is the start of my high school life, and then COVID happened. And then everything was just thrown up in the air. And it's been a struggle trying to get back to it, but through everything that we've been doing, especially through this, it's been so inspirational, seeing everything click. Sitting down with everybody, all my friends, and we're all just thinking, and then it just clicks. Everybody figures out a plan, and we build this, and we bring it to a whole list of people, a big audience. And against the people who are watching at home and for everybody here, I just want to say thank you so much for this opportunity. And I promise you that this isn't where we're going to stop. We're going to make sure that every single student in our school district gets what they're rightfully owed to. They need this. They need their education. They need a safe place to stay. And I promise you that I'll make sure, everybody here will make sure that that happens. So thank you.
Thank you so much. Yeah, I definitely think they deserve a round of applause, yeah. Any final question? Director Haig?
I'm sorry, I do have one question, and I certainly echo all of the compliments that my fellow board members have given you all. You very much deserve it, all of you. I wanted to ask, and I don't want to put any individuals on the spot, there's no need to answer with individual opinions, but I'm also very interested in the digital citizenship component of this, and I wonder if you all discussed, as some schools are doing, the sort of restrictions or limits or outright bans on things like phones in school and things like that? And I wonder if that's something you have talked about. I can understand it not being in part of this proposal, but I'm just, again, I don't want to put anyone on the spot as far as their individual opinion, but anything you're comfortable sharing.
I'd like to put Salma on the spot. Only because when we talked about this, and she'll remember this soon, a big part of that was us saying, "Everyone should have to take this." And Salma reminded us that there are many responsible young adults who are fine digital citizens and probably wouldn't want to be forced to take this as an elective at high school. But I think you should, you should expand on that.
Yeah, so we definitely did have discussions about that, and like from a perspective of a kid my age, I think that completely like banning phones and, you know, technology in general, kids are still gonna find ways to do what they want to do. So you'd rather teach them from a young age a responsible way to do that than to outright like ban things. You know what I mean? And yeah, we did talk about that, and I think implementing the digital citizenship into the curriculum of the middle school is a lot better of an idea than making it a high school class because that's then, you know, an extra graduation requirement. And, you know, I think we definitely discussed it a lot, and that's kind of like the conclusion we personally came to. So I don't know if you like agree, but yeah.
I'm, I'm really glad to see it in middle school. Uh, you were saying, because in high school it's, you have too many other requirements. But I was gonna say, because in high school it's too late. I don't mean to say it's too late, right? You're never too late to, to learn something, but I think in middle school is really where, where we need it.
Thank you, uh, Director Hague. Any other comments from the board? All right, seeing none, thank you so much for your presentation tonight.
If you guys can do me a favor, uh, I know it's gonna be later, but I, I do think if there are questions that come in from the public or the audience, your input to answer that, and then we'll let you go home in the night would be great. There's some policy to go through. Salma, I'll give you around about maybe thirty to forty-five more minutes, and then we'll go from there.
All right, so, should I go to the next one? Okay, well. All right. All right, so that was informational agenda item number one. Agenda item number two are a few policies, and I would like to hand it over to Director Des Noiers if you'd like to share a summary of the policies that we'll be reviewing tonight.
Thank you again, Director Neil. Uh, so, there are six policies under consideration this evening. As a reminder, uh, these policies must, um, be on the, must appear on the agenda at a, uh, future board meeting and be approved in that board meeting, um, for the policy updates to take effect. The six policies in question are policy two hundred, enrollment of students, policy two oh four, attendance, policy two seventeen, graduation requirements, policy two twenty-one, dress and grooming, policy two thirty-three, suspension and expulsion, and policy two fifty-one, which is being renamed, students experiencing homelessness, foster care, and other educational instability. So most of the, most of the updates to these policies, um, originate from changes enacted in state law, um, that strengthened supports for, um, s- students who find themselves, uh, experiencing, as the law now reads, homelessness, foster care, or other educational instability. And, um, other educational instability is defined, um, in both the policy updates and the, the law. Um, and it, and the, the supports provided are essentially uh, requiring, um, districts to explicitly support or support better students that fall into these categories, uh, to improve their chances of achieving graduation, of, of satisfying graduation requirements and achieving graduation, uh, to move on in life. So, uh, there are some other, while these policies were being updated, um, administration and, uh, the board did take the opportunity to add some additional updates, uh, to these policies. Thank you. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Director Des Noiers, and I also as a note, um, as, as we do review these policies, we are updating the, uh, language. Uh, so we're using gender neutral language, uh, in each policy. Uh, were there any questions or comments regarding the policies that were under review for tonight by the board of directors? Okay, so we should be having a, a second reading, uh, Director Des Noiers, at our next, uh, regularly scheduled board meeting in March, correct?
Yes, that is the plan.
Okay, thank you. So I, I don't believe we, when we review, is this an item that we would have to move forward, or is it still just informational?
Yes, you would, if, if there were any policy after the public comment comes in that would then change the opinion of the board and move certain policies forward to the second reading or not, remember going to the second reading, there is still an opportunity to comment. At that time, there isn't necessarily a, a question and answer. This would be the last time for the public to really Q and A and give the board feedback on thoughts that they would have before this policy, these policies go forward. So some policies could go forward, some may not, depending on how the public feedback is and the board's decision.
Thank you for the clarification, uh, Dr. McGary. All right, um, this... Sorry. I lost my place. All right, so this brings us to the public comic section, uh, tonight. Are there any public comments in person for this committee?
So what would happen now is anybody who would like to come up and address the board, uh, or for the specific agenda items will take in person first. And then if there are no in person, we'll go to the virtual comments.
If you could just walk up to the microphone, provide your name and address.
Good evening. My name is Edward Ganges. I'm at nineteen oh five Green Hill Road in Lansdowne, uh, PA, uh, really Upper Darby. And just wanted to say thank you to, I think it's Dr. Aloe and all the students for your wonderful, um, presentation, your research, and your, your goal and agenda of identifying positive ways to actually change the culture of Upper Darby School District. And I'd like to, you know, um, say that culture being, um, peer-to-peer mentoring, where we take you older students and get you involved with younger students, introduce you to, um, the education, um, career path. And, um, that type of community involvement from the people, of the people, to the people, I believe is a, a very, uh, powerful tool in the tool belt for the, the district and the school board to, um, really change climate and culture and improve the lives of all Upper Darby, uh, students and residents. So thank you very much for believing in that positive mission, and, uh, thank you for the hard work and research that you've done to bring that presentation forward. Uh, to, to the board, as of a parent and a community member, I do encourage you to, um, vote as Dr. McGary asked, to give them the opportunity to continue to move forward, to pursue that agenda. I, as a community member, uh, and parent of students, um, think it's a great idea and shows, um, uh, just the right way of thinking about the potential of our youth from the elementary school all the way up to the high school level. Uh, two, how positive things can influence, um, change in the community versus more reactionary things. I did hear Dr. McGary address the idea that, uh, metal detectors, uh, he considers it to be a more reactionary, um, possibility in the tool belt, and that it is now, and, and he'd like to recognize this as maybe a more front-running possibility. Um, and that adds not a front-running possibility. I would like, actually like to invite the board to, to take this opportunity to declare that weapons detection is at least in the short term for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, four school year is actually not even on the table for consideration, and that we would be giving a good breathing space to the opportunity to introduce these new positive agendas and other positive agendas that I'm sure Dr. McGary and the school board must also be working on, as well as the, the, yeah, Dr. McGary, the administration and the school board is obviously also working on. Um, if you can't, uh, provide us with that assurance at this time, then at least provide us, when you have an opportunity, um, with an update on where that agenda may be in the list of things and, uh, you know, what the community can, where the community could look to continue to get some insight into your thought processes on, um, what the status is and how we could continue to provide feedback on that potential possibility as well. So with that said, thank you so much for, um, presenting these positive ideas. Thank you again to the kids for presenting these positive outlooks. And, um, you know, God bless us all, and might we succeed in, uh, doing the most positive things always for our community together. So thank you very much.
Thank you for your engagement and your attendance tonight, uh, Mr. Ganges. Dr. McGary, do, would you like to comment?
Yes, obviously, I'm a member of this team, uh, with this board. I do not have a voting say here. I think the relationships that we've built, I've always appreciated your honesty and candor. I know that there have been comments made by this board in previous meetings expressing your thoughts and your opinions. I think sometimes, and I've had this conversation, hopefully, uh, and since Mr. Ganges was, had the courage enough to come to the board and, and make those comments, which I appreciate. Mr. Ganges and I have had many, many conversations, and, and some of the conversations I've had, I've talked about sometimes in life we make assumptions. Um, and we make assumptions without giving a chance for everybody to flesh out where it is. Sometimes we want things to happen faster. I, for one, could tell you, I'd rather have things happen faster than not, but unfortunately, it doesn't happen as quickly as I'd like it to. And in past conversations with this board, I have an obligation, I'll speak for myself, to bring forward to this board as many opportunities as possible, good, bad, or indifferent, to talk about safety and security. When I interview somebody for this school district for administrative position, I ask a key question. What's gonna keep you up at night if I gave you the keys to this school? If you're not thinking about the safety and security of our kids, it might not be a good fit. You got into education, you should care about kids, you should want kids to succeed academically, but socially and emotionally, kids need to feel safe in schools. It is my job for the o- over eighty thousand residents who pay my salary and pay taxes in this school community to bring forward to all of you, all of the options. And Khalid, you got me choked up today, you should know that. Because we do this for you guys, right? And so having come from here and been from here and worrying about safety and security every day, somebody's baby getting hurt in one of these schools, it's emotional for us, right? And I, I worry about that. So I have to worry about, do I have to have weapons detection systems? Armed security, bring dogs into search lockers because the drugs that kids are involved in or could be exposed today could kill them in an instant. We worry about that. I have this responsibility. I'm sworn in by a judge to do this job. Appreciate Board President Brown joining me at four o'clock, five in the morning for a long ride to, to Reading School District to see what other school, and I thank Reading for taking us in, to see what goes on there. Never once have I been on with this board where a decision was made without a public discussion. And so I will say, there isn't a public presentation right now in, in the next couple of months, and certainly not for the implementation of next year, where we're putting in weapons detection systems in our schools. That's not what we're working toward right now. Could that happen one day? I hope not. But that would happen if poor choices are there. And I've said this to Mr. Ganges, I'm gonna say it to anybody who's listening. I hope that if something were to ever happen tragically in any school in this community, private, parochial, public, that we rally around each other instead of blaming people, right? Because what's happening in schools right now is teachers are scared, administrators are scared, that when a young baby brings a gun into a school in Virginia and shoots a teacher, the principal gets fired, that, that the teachers get in trouble. People are afraid. Why would you take on this responsibility? If that's what you have to live with every single day. Nobody got into these jobs to think that we were gonna meet with kids fighting on a bus or that kids would have to take drugs and overdose. That's not what we do, what we do. We're here to get these young people to do what they did tonight, which is huge. To hear them speak and to present themselves that way in Upper Darby, as an Upper Darby kid. That's the beauty of these jobs, right? So I'm not here, I don't want to put those things in place in the schools. But until the world wakes up and society wakes up, you leave school superintendents and school board members with little remedies to adult problems. It's not their fault. When Khalid says to me, Dr. McGary, upset with me, don't make me feel like I'm going to a prison, I don't want them. That hurts. Nobody wants to make that decision. When I walk a building with, with Board President Brown, and we're watching kids in another school community prop doors open to get like gang members into schools to recruit kids, and we're watching it. We're watching it happen. I lose sleep over that. So tonight, my recommendation is that we're not moving forward. And I know that you know that with me, because I, we, we have that relationship. I'll speak for myself. If we're ever to that point, it will be a public conversation. And it will certainly not, as I said, Mr. Ganges in previous meetings, I'm never gonna make everybody happy. I'm not.
We aren't gonna make everybody happy.
At the end of the day, if I keep my eye on the prize of doing the best we can, having integrity and discussing it, that's all we can ask. And that's what we're gonna continue to do. So that, that's my answer.
Thank you, Dr. McGary. President Brown?
Dr. McGary, the day you stop caring about the safety and the day that's not your priority is the day that, uh, I don't think you'll even want to do this job. So your priorities are right. Um, you've heard the mandate from, from this collective body on what you should focus on, and that's keeping all of our kids safe. I mean, that's the ultimate priority. They need to come here to learn and focus on that. Um, and even while we were on a, a tour of, of something that we was looking at, right? Just, just reviewing it, we saw some glitches and, you know, propping doors open to get kids in school while they're showing us an intrusion detection system. So, um, it, it's scary. It's scary. So it, you know, we have to look at all possible things to keep our kids safe. It's terrifying. Um, you know, we're, we're one of the largest school districts, and we haven't had, knock on wood, we haven't had any of the tragedies, and I, I pray we don't. But if we do nothing, right, let, let's, let's say we continue on the path that we're on, right? And I don't want to have anything to make kids feel unsafe, but if something happens, then there would be people lined up to say, you did nothing. You let it happen. You just, you know, you, you rested on your laurels and you just expected things to happen normally. So it's scary. We'll continue to look at it, and we'll continue to ask you to do your job, worry about it, um, and, and, and review things and try to keep us all safe. So thank you for your work and, and how much you care. That's very apparent. Thank you for that.
Thank you, President Brown. Are there any other public comments, in-person public comments? Just state your name and, uh, address.
Uh, Mike Bente, tw- uh, two fifty-five North Linden Avenue. Uh, so, uh, first and foremost, I want to thank you guys for awesome presentation. I was literally like, no words, no words, like really, like good job. Um, keep up the good work. Um, I think you guys got something going. Keep the gears in motion, um, and let's, let's finish strong. Um, Ed covered pretty much, uh, most of the thing. I, I agree with Ed, a lot of things he said. Um, so I'm not gonna be on here to, you know, I just wanted to second Ed's comment. Um, and then I wanted to piggyback off of what, um, um, you said, Dr. Hedge, right? Hey, okay. Um, about, um, the digital citizenship. Um, so you said something about, I'm sorry, but I, you know, next time I think I'm going right, I think I'm going right out. You know, freestyle like this is like, all right, I'm trying my best here, okay? But you said something about digital citizenship, and, um, I thought about a report from the CDC and the harmful effects on, you know, cell, like cellphone, uh, technology, social media on teenagers. I mean, it's literally up there with smoking. It's that bad. We're talking about crime, we're talking about, um, all these problems, right? There is a correlation. So I think, uh, I think it would be a good idea to, I mean, personally, I think it would be a good idea to, to, um, to ban cellphones in school. That's just my opinion. Give the kids a break, right, from the cellphones, right? Um, at least they know when they come to school, cellphone is not allowed. So now they gotta put their focus on their academics, right? Yes, responsibility. I understand that part, but us as adults, we have responsibility too to show you guys the way, right? And if it means that we have to limit or try to take something away from you guys for a period of time, right, it's, it's not gonna be the end of the world. Right, so just, just something to think about, guys. So like, um, I'm, I, I don't know, like, if we can go in that direction, but it is something serious. The CDC just published a report, right? No joke. It's serious. Right? So I suggest all the board members on here to look that up. The, the harmful effects, um, social media and I could, I mean, it could probably help alleviate some of the issues in the school. Right? So that's all I gotta say for tonight. I appreciate your time. Thank you so much for listening to me. for listening to me. Everyone, have a good night.
Thank you, Mr. Bente, and thank you for your engagement and attendance this evening. Are there any other in-person public comment? Please state your name and your residence.
Good evening, my name is Michelle Schofield, I reside at 519 Melbank Road here in Upper Darby. I came to really support the presentation of the students here in Upper Darby Township. When I spoke to Dr. McGary last week, and he shared that this presentation would be done by the students, I had to be here to support them and just to cheer you guys on because the very first time I had interaction with these students was back in the fall at the Children First Forum, the weekend forum, that we spent three long days at the forum. And our goal was to think big. It was to think big, it was to help to write policies that involve the education and safety of the students. And that was the very first time that I had an interaction with them. So to see them almost six months later during a presentation, I am very proud, I am very proud. And just to, again, support the leadership of Dr. McGary, you are the reason why I'm having faith in the school district again. I've said it to you before, and I'll say it again publicly, I had lost faith in the school district for the way that the leadership was going before, but after hearing Dr. McGary at the beginning of the school year, of the 22, 23 school year, I enrolled my son, I took him out of homeschooling, which we've been doing for several years, and he is now in the Tandana Upper Darby School District. So thank you for your leadership, thank you to the board for supporting his leadership and supporting the students and creating solutions and allowing them to create solutions to some of the challenges that we've had this school year. So thank you so much for everyone here, and especially to our future, because the children are the future. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Schofield, for your attendance and engagement this evening. Are there any other in-person public comment? Seeing none, are there any virtual comments or questions presented?
Please bear with my voice, allergies, no.
Please speak louder.
No, there are no. I got your back, Ms. Buford, there are no, there are no public comments tonight. Before we close, if I could just add just one piece to this, I think the amount of work that went into this for the students, and I appreciate that, the real goals we have to drum up, 24 kids who want to be teachers, that's the immediate impact. This, I think, confidently, if the board allows us to, before they make a decision to flesh this out, we got to identify out of 1,000 kids graduating this year, 24 kids that we can encourage to be a teacher. A key part of that presentation is Craig and I have to figure out a way to pay for their future. So those 24 kids, it's important what we talked about. When they leave, one of the barriers is, how can I, I'm getting emotional, this tonight is a big, big meeting for us. 24 kids, a move a barrier for them to become a teacher. You don't get paid a lot to be a teacher. So to come out in debt is a bad idea. So what we talked about is also having some security to have a job while you're going through this is a good idea. So Craig and I are going to work with John, Dr. Counsel, on what's a reasonable salary when they come out that they can work in our schools. And then, because, you know, Ms. Gorford called me out on this, that the idea, there's a difference between reimbursement and payment, correct? It would be better to pay it than reimburse it. So if we can agree that you're going to sign on when you leave here, stay with us, we'll pay your way to get your teaching certificate if you stay with us. There's no, nobody else is going to figure this out for us. If we don't figure it out on our own, how are we going to get there? Remove that barrier, we're going to administratively try to bring that to you, that we're going to figure it out financially, they're going to get a salary so they can pay for them to go to school, and then they're going to commit to being teachers here. What better way to diversify our staff and remove some of these obstacles than to do it that way? So, the amount of work, that's the short term. The long term, as Dr. Alloway said, is the flow of the program being built and designed. And I think, I think we'll get there, it's going to take a lot of work. Ms. Schofield and I are a member of a Safe Carriers Conversation, we had a meeting on Friday, Bonner and Prendy, hopefully they're listening to this because we sent this out to everybody, they're interested in trying to join forces with us in this community for mentorship and giving back. This could lead to community cleanups, you name it, empowering kids that way. We have a long way to go to get there, but I think we can, if we, if we, if we get our youth involved in those kinds of things. So, think about that before you make your decision, whether you tell me to table it or we can continue to move forward looking at it.
Thank you, Dr. McGary. I love this conversation about this topic, and I think we could go all night. But I know we have other agenda items, and so, to conclude tonight's committee meeting, Dr. Kelly, could you please provide us with a review of the agenda items once more?
Sure. So the first item was the Upper Darby High School Community Pride Through Youth Mentorship that we spoke of tonight, the students who did an awesome job to move forward with that work in exploring the ideas that were brought to our attention this evening. And then the second item were the policies.
Thank you, Dr. Kelly. Both were informational. Item two is going to be on the board report, so will require board action at that meeting, but it would continue to move forward unless if anyone objects. Okay. All right, seeing none, President Brown, I turn the meeting back over to you.
Thank you for running the meeting, Director Neal. A motion is in order for the adjournment of the Education and Pupils Services Committee meeting.
So moved.
Thank you, meeting adjourned, all in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Good evening, welcome to the February 28, 2023 Finance and Operations Committee in-person and virtual meeting. The meeting of the Finance and Operations Committee will please come to order. The district posted this evening's agenda to board docs at least 24 hours prior to the commencement of this meeting. Is there a motion to approve that previously posted agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, are there any amendments to offer?
Yes, we have one amendment, there was a slight change to one of the presentations where a slide was actually broken out, and there were two slides to just create a little bit more clarity for the presentation. That's all.
All right, will anyone move to add the described item to the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Question, what, what presentation was that?
It's the second agenda item, Condition Assessments.
Thank you.
Thank you, it's been moved, do we have a second? Thank you, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the agenda with the approved amendments have been moved and seconded, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, please signify by saying aye opposed and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstained and state your name for the record. The motion carried. I will now turn over the Finance and Operations Committee meeting to co-chair, Director War Savage.
Thank you very much, President Brown. Mr. Rogers, would you mind beginning with an overview of your agenda items for this evening, and we can go right into the first presentation, please?
Absolutely. Tonight, we have four agenda items. The first is the long-range planning, which will require board action. The presentation will be provided by Schrader Group and T&amp;M Engineering, and they will present a building capacity analysis and recommendations for a long-range plan. They'll review their building capacity process and provide a summary of their results, which will show the current utilization of our buildings along with the calculated functional capacity. If we were to implement the new education specifications. Additionally, they will provide the results of a site analysis, which reviews potential locations for a new school along with the associated pros and cons and provide their recommendation. In addition, the administration will ask, will be asking the board for authorization to further explore the recommendations and also approve the finalized report. The second agenda item is a condition assessment presentation, which is informational. SiteLogic will present the results of a comprehensive building assessment performed on the district-owned schools. The assessment includes all aspects of the location, the grounds, buildings, or the building envelope, architectural finishes, code compliance systems, and equipment. They will review their method of evaluation, software utilized, and a summary of the primary concerns that each building will be reviewed. Additionally, facility cost calculated for each category at each school will be provided along with a calculated facilities conditions index, otherwise known as an FCI. The third item, informational, is a report on annual water testing. This will be the review of our annual water testing that we give each year, the district administration will provide an update as it relates to the district's annual water testing analysis and results and current reporting requirements established under Act 39 of 2018. The water testing was performed at all district facilities in January of 2023. The final item, which will require board action, is a review of policies. Two policies tonight, policy 011, Principles of Governance and Leadership, and 810 Transportation. At this time, I'm going to hand it over for an introduction to the presentation for the first agenda to Dr. McGary.
If that's okay, Board Member War Savage with you. Just want to first acknowledge the hard work of all the principals in the school district, Dr. Manfree, Mrs. Simone, Mr. Marshallak, who's sick, could not be here with us tonight, and then Marvin Lee and Tim Lambert, who are in the back of the room, Tim in particular helping spearhead this work. It's been a little while since we've really done a full-scale condition assessment and review, updating our information here in the facilities. If you're familiar with the idea of PlanCon that you'll hear a little bit tonight, several years ago, we had a project actually kicked out of PlanConning because we didn't have an up-to-date, recent facility study completed. And so when the ARPESR funding came forward, we thought of what better idea, as we were talking about ventilation and COVID and the impact on COVID, we should probably really do an up-to-date, full-scale review of our facilities, our enrollment trends, and have a really expert outside opinion of what could we do here in Upper Darby with our facilities and our space and our limitations and capacity. What we're going to go through tonight is complicated, complex stuff, it's a lot to digest, so we try to break it up as much as we can. There are no definites, especially with the part of where we're moving forward with building a new elementary school. We will be asking simply for you to allow us to engage in a conversation with the township. We have presented much of this in the past, we've explored certain properties, 69th Street Athletic Field and Marshall Road previously, so that is not new as far as public presentations are concerned. What is new is that there'll be a recommendation from the administration asking you, the board, to allow me to talk to the township more about pursuing a particular township-owned property that we've been leasing for many, many, many years. There's also considerations with the size of a building that you'll hear about tonight, that we would be able to further explore kindergarten opportunities here in the school district. Again, very rough review of this information. After tonight's presentations, if the board gives us permission to move forward, we'll better flesh out those opportunities, a new location for an elementary school, as well as what kindergarten options we could have in store for us here in the community. But I do want to compliment Tim Lambert and Marvin Lee for spearheading this work. It's enough to run the school district every day, but to go through and review all the facilities in this school district is a big, big deal. So I will turn it over to Mr. Schrader from Schrader Architects and the group in SiteLogic here, to review what you guys have brought us, the experts, been very impressed with what you've done here and how you're working well as here as a school district, so.
Thank you, Dr. McGary. I'm going to actually kick it off just to introduce everybody. Good evening, my name is Rose Feder, I'm Director of Sales at SiteLogic, and with me tonight, I have Melissa, my.
Michael Schlosser.
Is that better? With me tonight is my colleague, Melissa Kohlstock, she's Director of Deliverables. And of course, we have
Danielle Hoffer is not here with us tonight, so she's going to be speaking over the Wizard of Oz speaker here, so you'll get a little bit of that. But I'm going to control the remote control because I have to do it for her, so pardon me. There are four parts to what we're going to talk about. It's going to start really with what your educational specifications, meaning what the goals of space use in your district were. Danielle's going to show you how those fit in your buildings and how they don't fit, and give you capacity analyses. Chris is going to talk to you about the sites, and then we'll show you how sites fit those people onto them. So that's the goal here. So Danielle, I'm going to start, if I can get the clicker. Here we go, to planning goals and objectives. This is yours, Danielle.
Oh, okay. Thank you, David. Thank you for advancing the slides for me, and thank you, everybody. I'm sorry I can't be there tonight with you, but what I'm going to speak with you tonight about is the building capacity analysis. And when we first came to the district, we established what the goals and objectives would be as we embarked on this master plan. Understanding that two of the schools that you currently have students in are leased properties, and so one of the objectives is to eliminate the need for that lease, so that all students can attend school within the district boundaries. Another objective, which is typical for many school districts, is that you want to eliminate modular classrooms. Modular classrooms are a means to add additional classroom space to a school. They were meant to be temporary, and oftentimes, they're pretty permanent. So the objective there is to eliminate modular classrooms off of your properties. And you can see there's twenty-five, twenty-one modular classrooms across the district. The other objective is relieve overcrowding and at least with the least impact to the educational program. So when we consider options, whether construct a school on a site, adding additions and renovations, that is addressing, that is looking at impacting the educational program. We want to look at other opportunities available to the school district. We also would like to provide instruction in appropriately sized spaces, so we looked at square footages of classroom spaces as part of this analysis. We also worked closely with the district and as they developed their, and updated their educational specifications for the primary and secondary grade levels, and look for opportunities to explore K to three education opportunities. So with that, so you may ask the question, why calculate capacity? Well, it's kind of a simple answer in the fact that you can't really understand how you can accommodate your students either in your current enrollments or your projected enrollments until you know how many students can be accommodated in your schools. So that's not only looking at the number of students in each of the buildings, but it's also needed for this district to understand what kind of staffing that they need for their schools, what kind of aids they need for your schools. And through the analysis, we'll be able to uncover which schools are overcrowded and have too many students that really should be housed in this school, or those schools that may be underutilized. And is the solution to simply adjust attendance boundaries, or will you need to do some other measures to accommodate enrollments? The other factor in looking why, in trying to calculate capacity is to look at various variables so that we can reasonably accommodate your students within a school, on a particular site, in any particular building. And so the physical variables may be the size of the building, and respect to that is the number of classrooms in those buildings, and the size of those classrooms in the buildings, and whether the students can get to those classrooms. So we're looking at accessibility and other physical attributes of each of the buildings. The operational variables is, for instance, do you have enough staff that you can accommodate to staff the building? So that's an issue that's come up quite frequently with various school districts that we're working with. Programmatic variables may include, is the building able to provide instructional areas and other support spaces? For instance, at the elementary schools, do you have parity between each of the elementary schools, and can the schools accommodate your ed specs? Next slide. Thank you. Defining capacity. There's many different ways to look at capacity, and what we've done is isolated three different categories as part of this analysis. The maximum capacity, and we're looking at that in terms of your class size guidelines. Those are guidelines that have been adapted by the board. There was one adopted for grades K to five in two thousand and sixteen, for grades six to eight in two thousand and seventeen, and we're using high school guidelines for around twenty to thirty students per classroom. And you can see the breakdown of the class sizes that's identified in each of those policies. These are the maximum class sizes, maximum students that we want to provide in each of the classes. Current use capacity is looking at a point in time, and the point in time is now for the two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and thirty-three school year. So what is the current room utilization now? Using those class sizes, and that's information that we got when we visited the sites and messed with the principals, which we'll give in a little bit of detail here later. Functional use capacity is what is the optimal capacity of each of your schools? Taking into consideration your educational specifications and projecting those, projecting the enrollments five years out. Again, using the same class sizes and, again, through information, through the collaboration of the people at Upper Darby. Next. So what rooms come for capacity at the elementary schools? You're looking at homerooms, so it's just grade level instruction. At the middle schools, we found that, given the, a number of students that are at the middle schools and the space limitations, that spaces are being used for capacity that were not traditionally considered for capacity. And at the high school, we typically look at capacity, all the general instruction classrooms, and since students are taking electives throughout the day, all those other elective classrooms are also used for capacity. Next slide. What do not account for capacity? So at the elementary schools, we again are just looking at homerooms, so we don't give capacity for other classrooms such as art and music. For Upper Darby, specific to your school district, since all students, including special education students, are part of a full inclusion program, those special education supplemental classrooms do not receive capacity. We only want to count students once. Modular classrooms, as we talked about before, are not considered permanent and considered substandard classrooms, so they don't receive capacity. Next. So the process that we went through is that we got information from Marvin's team, looking at existing building plans that actually had the room square footages on them. Again, that educational specifications we used as part of our information gathering, as well as historical and current enrollments for, by, throughout the district and by school. We did building walkthroughs in the month of August, went through all of your schools to get in an idea of the context of the building and the sites. We conducted principal interviews in-person and via Zoom for two months to understand their current room utilization. And then from that information, we prepared floor plans of each of the buildings with square footages. The enrollment projections were developed in cooperation with Upper Darby School District's Office of Data. This particular slide shows the historical enrollments as of October first of each school year from two thousand and twenty-seven to two thousand and twenty-eight, and then to current year, and then projected five years out. They, the projections were developed using a combination of different data sets and methodologies. The baseline model uses a standard practice you may have heard of the cohort projecting model, which projects kindergarten and first graders based on live birth data and then reviews grade-by-grade transitions. Then we made it even more specific to Upper Darby by looking at the live births based on the district's registration dates, which is when a student is five years old and eligible for to enroll versus a calendar year, and associated live births for kindergarten and first grade catchment. We also looked at transition not only from grade to grade, but by feeder school, system, school by school. Other factors included grade retention, especially, especially at the high school, enrollment fluctuations due to the pandemic, and student migration and transportation. So when you look at this, if you look at the enrollment projections, again, looking at the five years out only, because if students aren't even been born, so if you look further out than five years, you really don't have accurate data to work from. But you can see that the enrollments are increasing slightly and then declining, which is probably due to large class sizes of students graduating, and then the low births having to do with the pandemic. Anyway, the, the full report of these enrollment projections by school and by grade is provided in the full report. Next slide. Building utilization factor. Okay, so when we talked about the recommended class size, the number of seats actually doesn't feel, doesn't necessarily match the number of students that are attending the school. So for example, looking at utilization, if you have twenty-five students' seats and you have twenty-five students, that's a hundred percent utilization. If you have twenty-five seats and thirty students, you can understand that your overcapacity at that point at about a hundred and twenty percent utilization. Conversely, twenty-five students and eighteen students, then you'll be more at seventy-five utilization. So the utilization is characterized by either the educationally appropriate percentage of the school day that a teaching station can be used for instruction, or the ratio of unoccupied or occupied seats per the teaching station per period, meaning. If you look at a ninety percent utilization at the elementary schools, you're thinking, you're factoring ten percent of the day, somebody's not in that seat because they're going to another program. These utilization factors vary, but this is what we typically see in this regional area, and we use references such as the organizations that we're involved in, as well as our peers. Next. Other planned assumptions, and this is the, the last slide, so Aronomic, understanding that after the renovations and additions are complete in the summer of two thousand and twenty-three, Senko will close and those students will attend Aronomic. Kindergarten Center will no longer receive students from Aronomic or the current, current Senko catchment area. So that makes three classrooms available at the kindergarten center. And Aronomic, which currently houses grades one to five, will serve grades K to five. The life skills, artistic support, and emotional support classrooms provided in the educational specifications have been accounted for, and we understand that's going to be something that continues to be developed as, as part of any planning. Next. Okay, so what does all that mean? So what this is showing in the gray column is that we're applying all of your class sizes for the grade, particular grade levels. And the gray column, again, is your current two thousand and twenty-two capacity. And so we counted the number of classrooms that are currently be accommodated in your building. This particular school has modular classrooms, which we're not giving capacity to. It also has classrooms down in the basement that are not accessible. It also has classrooms that are in modular classrooms, if I haven't said that before, as well as classrooms on the stage. So when you start pulling those classrooms into the building, taking program off of the stage, making spaces accommodated in appropriately sized classrooms, you end up taking away from the count of other classrooms that would typically be used for your general instruction. So the capacity of that building goes down in the functional use capacity. Next slide. And when we apply that to looking at your current enrollment divided by that operating capacity, you can see what the utilization factor is. And again, in elementary schools, we're targeting ninety percent. So currently, you're operating, we're not counting the modulators in this, but currently, you're operating above ninety percent, and when you take away all those classrooms, you have a, a real capacity issue. Another example is at the middle school. We're using the example of Beverly Hills. Here you see on the current use capacity, what we're doing is accommodating, is we're not only, our, our, all of our instructional areas are being used for homerooms because there's so many kids in this that they needed for the scheduling standpoint to accommodate as much as to use all those classrooms for homerooms. In the ideal world, the optimal operating of that school, you would not only include all the educational specifications spaces in the building, but you would also just use the homerooms of the teams for your capacity. So you can see the differential there between your optimal operating capacity and the current use capacity. And that translates on the next slide to, they're making it work now, but optimally, you need additional space at the middle school level, and that's kind of falls true with Drexel Hills as well. So when you look at the full summary of it, and I draw your attention over to the purple side because you really want to optimize your use of the buildings as much as possible. There's two buildings, the kindergarten center and Aronomic, because kindergarten kids are coming out of the kindergarten to go to Aronomic, are within the functional operating capacity recommendations, but the rest of the schools are not. This, if you look at ninety percent utilization across the board, your capacity is deficient by eleven hundred and sixty-two seats. And then we also show what it would be at, at a hundred percent utilization.
Danielle, if I could just jump in, and I appreciate your patience with us as you did this work. I know we had some strong conversations in the boardroom when we did this. It's key, I think, in the, in the top part of this, the kindergarten Aronomic in particular, your group and this team was working on our administrative recommendations based on the fact that the board still has to make decisions whether they're going to do this or not. But in order for you to plan, to look at our full capacity, you had to look at it that way, not saying it's a sure thing. The reason why the kindergarten also looks like it's better utilized is because we would be moving kindergarten spaces out of the kindergarten center to free up some of that space. So those who are watching in particular tonight, this is based on some assumptions. Because if we don't move in this direction, we have an even bigger capacity issue, and that's really what this points out as well. So I just want to make sure for the viewers that are there, your team and the team that's here took the assumption that, hey, you got to do something with Senko and Charles Kelly and the kindergarten center, and we understood your recommendation, so let's play that recommendation out.
At the, at the middle school, we're also seeing, again, I draw your attention to the purple column on the right-hand side. If we're fully applying the, the educational specifications and using the optimal capacity for those buildings, we would need as many as fifty to get to a hundred percent utilization and maybe sixty to get to the ninety percent utilization for the middle schools. The high schools is a little bit different because we understand that not all students are taking a full classroom, class load. So given that students, some students are attending Delaware Community College and CTC, you know, and scheduling, you can make that. much as to use all those classrooms for home rooms. In the ideal world, the optimal operating of that school, you would not only include all the educational specifications spaces in the building, but you would also just use the home rooms of the teams for your capacity. So you can see the differential there between your optimal operating capacity and the current use capacity. And that translates on the next slide to they're making it work now, but optimally, you need additional space at the middle school level. And that's kind of falls true with Drexel Hills as well. So when you look at the full summary of it, and I draw your attention over to the purple side, because you really want to optimize your use of the buildings as much as possible. There's two buildings, the kindergarten center and Aronomic, because kindergarten kids are coming out of the kindergarten center to go to Aronomic, are within the functional operating capacity recommendations, but the rest of the schools are not. This, if you look at 90% utilization across the board, your capacity is deficient by 1,162 seats. And then we also show what it would be at at 100% utilization.
Danielle, if I could just jump in, and I appreciate your patience with us as you did this work. I know we had some strong conversations in the boardroom when we did this. It's key, I think, in the in the top part of this, the kindergarten Aronomic in particular, your group and this team was working on our administrative recommendations based on the fact that the board still has to make decisions whether they're going to do this or not. But in order for you to plan, to look at our full capacity, you had to look at it that way, not saying it's a sure thing. The reason why the kindergarten also looks like it's better utilized is because we would be moving kindergarten spaces out of the kindergarten center to free up some of that space. So those who are watching in particular tonight, this is based on some assumptions, because if we don't move in this direction, we have an even bigger capacity issue. And that's really what this points out as well. So I just want to make sure for the viewers that are there, your team and the team that's here took the assumption that, hey, you got to do something with Senko and Charles Kelly and the kindergarten center, and we understood your recommendation. So let's play that recommendation out.
At the at the middle school, we're also seeing, again, I draw your attention to the purple column on the right hand side. If we're fully applying the educational specifications and using the optimal capacity for those buildings, we would need as many as 50 to get to 100% utilization and maybe 60 to get to the 90% utilization for the middle schools. The high schools is a little bit different, because we understand that not all students are taking a full classroom class load. So given that students, some students are attending Delaware Community College and CTC, you know, and scheduling, you can make that work within an operating capacity that's workable. Next slide. So capacity recommendations. Continue the track that you're currently on now and close SenCo to merge those students into Aronomic. Move forward with the Plan Clifton Heights Middle School project, because that will address some of the capacity needs at the sixth grade, eighth grade levels. And again, going back to those goals and objectives to minimize the disruption to the educational program, we looked at several options, also including sites that Tim will talk that Chris Jensen will talk about at TNM. But if there's an opportunity to build a new elementary school, that will address a lot of the issues in terms of capacity. Depending on the size of that new elementary school, there are other opportunities to take schools offline and reconfigure reconfiguring grade levels. And finally, again, going back to the goals and objectives, remove the existing modular classrooms, except for there's some modulators on the high school campus that's used for alternative ed. We wouldn't recommend moving those, but you could start to take some of those modular classrooms offline at the other schools within your school district.
Good. Thanks, Danny. That was a lot of data, and there are sheets for every school. And I guess you're lucky we didn't share everyone. So just real quickly, you did hear the comment about the idea of the Plan Clifton Heights Middle School, because that does take care of this slide. And I think the number that we probably want to draw your attention to on the elementary slide is that deficiency of of somewhere in the neighborhood of 1,100 to 1,200 students. Okay? So again, this is modeling these buildings the way you want to use them educationally in the future. It doesn't mean you're not delivering great education today in the spaces you've got. That is critical for everybody to understand. Okay, so we'll take those numbers and we'll move to the next step. Chris is going to briefly talk about the site assessments for four of the remaining sites that we looked at, and then we'll just share a little bit with you how we might gain the capacity of the 1,200-ish students that we talked about.
Great. Thank you, David. Again, I'm Chris Jensen with TNM Associates. Thank you for having us here tonight. So Danny spoke a little bit about the physical variables that we look at, and so I will be talking about some of the opportunities and constraints, existing conditions and characteristics of the sites that we that we studied. The first site here is the 69th Street Athletic Field Site. It is in Upper Darby Township. It is owned by the township, and the size of the site is approximately 11 acres. It's comprised of two different parcels. One of the first things we look at when we look at sites is the zoning and is the is the use for school or educational use allowed. And in this case, it's it's not a permitted use in the recreational district of Upper Darby Township. So some zoning work would would need to occur to allow for that to happen. Some other key items for zoning are that there are a maximum building height of 35 feet. There are coverage requirements, which are typical for sites. But one of the the most significant things I wanted to point out for this particular site is that the vast majority of it is within the 100-year FEMA floodplain. There go some extensive study work to determine if we would be able to modify that floodplain to begin with to allow for construction on the site. If in fact, a study of that nature was conducted, and it revealed that there was perhaps a chance that the site could be developed, then there would be significant permitting and approvals hurdles that we'd have to get over with regard to zoning. There would be variances needed for construction in the floodplain, as well as FEMA approvals. And that the typical land development process can take between, on average, I would say it's about a year. For this site, I would anticipate, given those constraints, that it if it were be able to be developed, it would take about 24 months or so to be to get through that process. So some other information here is that utilities, the sewer in the township does have capacity constraints. That is known throughout the township, and we would work through those constraints, but that's that is an ongoing issue. The site is along 69th Street, which is a PennDOT street, a state-owned street, which requires special permitting. And there was a threatened and endangered species. We call it a we call it a hit when we run the threatened and endangered species search for a peregrine falcon habitat that would need to be cleared should this site be pursued further. So the next site we looked at is the Cardington Recreation Area Site. This is a district-owned site. It's much smaller than the last site that we just looked at. This is 3.6 acres. It is in the same zoning district of the township, the recreational district, so it would present the same types of zoning challenges to be overcome with regard to rezoning, or what's called a text amendment to the zoning ordinance. All the roads surrounding the site are PennDOT roads as well, and it it does have similar sewer capacity constraints that would need to be worked through with the township and DEP. Next site. The Hillcrest Elementary Site is also a district-owned site, and it's approximately 12 acres. So again, a larger site. As you know, it has the existing elementary school on the site that takes up approximately two-thirds of the 12-acre site. So there's about four acres remaining in the athletic field. The zoning for this particular site is actually residential, R3, and this district allows for educational or school use via what's called special exception, and that is through the zoning hearing board of the township for sites that have higher impacts. Similar to the other sites, they it has very similar issues that would need to be overcome with regard to land development and permitting. It is not in the floodplain. It and it does have a Indiana bat habitat clearance that would be required. So the last site I'll talk about here is the Marshall Road Field Site. This one, similar to 69th Street, is owned by the township, and it's approximately 19 acres in total. That's a little little bit misleading, because there is a portion of it in the floodplain. So the buildable acreage is eight acres that runs along Marshall Road. This site is is actually within two zoning districts, the recreation and the residential are four district. The portion that's buildable is in the recreation district, similar to two of the other sites, and would require zoning work with the township for for development. The Marshall Road is also a PennDOT road and will require PennDOT permitting. And that that's the overview of the four sites from a physical characteristic standpoint. And with that, I'll pass it back to David to talk about planning.
So just a couple more minutes on this, and then we'll ask for questions, and then we'll move to the next portion. So thank you for your patience on this. So keep in mind that 1,200-ish number that we talked about from the elementary standpoint. And we'll go back through Chris's pieces of property here. And I think two points, two takeaways from what he described here, not specific to 69th Street, but specific to the others. He talked about allowable use on the site. This is a hurdle that we go through throughout southeastern Pennsylvania in zoning. Essentially, the goal is obviously to try to have schools that are within neighborhoods, but neighborhoods are located, they're residential, and so they have an R restriction. And that R zoning requirement basically calls for smaller buildings, smaller parcels. So when you try to build something larger, they want to try to keep that residential size and scale. Building height, he mentioned building height is 35 feet maximum. That's pretty much the maximum on all four sites. That's pretty much the maximum throughout your area here for the most part, unless you're in one of the commercial districts. So when you go to 35 feet, that essentially allows you two stories. We know that living in this area, we have very tight sites. That's all that we have left, and so we have to build a little bit taller. So typically, we're looking at about three stories per building. Three stories is 45 to 50 feet. So it's not unusual for us to have to seek these zoning exceptions, variances, and so on. So please understand that that would be part of the process. 69th Street, I think Chris spoke pretty well to this one. Clearly, you have some real limitations there. Building in a floodplain always creates a challenge, and he pretty much expressed that. The diagram that you're looking at, just for everybody's sake, there's a blue hatched area at the bottom. Chris's engineers were trying to figure out how you actually accommodate the change in flood height there, so that that is no longer a floodplain. And one way to do it is to create a very large channel, or almost creating a small riverbed to some extent. So that's what that's identifying here. They were actually working through a solution in some way, shape, or form. So Cardington, as we look at that site and look at the available acreage, what we were trying to test here was how much building could you get on the site, still accommodate the parking requirements for zoning, and still have some playing area. And nobody should take any of these designs away as designs. These are test fits. That's all that this is. And whoever designs from here on will design something. So just understand that these are test fits. But you can see that you can get an approximate 550-student building at three stories on this site, and 550 students equals a quantity of classrooms equals a quantity of parking spaces. That's what that is showing. So that's just to give you a sense of what can be accommodated on the Cardington site. The Hillcrest Site, the interesting challenge of building on the Hillcrest Site is that you folks don't really have a place to put the students while you build something new. And so in the case of Hillcrest, you'd have to figure out, you can see a dashed line underneath pretty much the word facility. You'd have to figure out how to get a building on that site while the kids were in school. So that's what's being represented here. Whether it's the right solution or not, you're seeing, again, a three-story building on the right-hand side in white. You're seeing all of the parking requirements here. The interesting thing about this is because of its location within the district, you would have to bus probably 70% of the students. So we do have to provide area for bussing, so you would have both a bus loop and a car loop on the site. But it's doable, and you can see you have the opportunity to have the kids in the existing school while the new ones built, tear the old one down, do all of the parking areas, and you accommodate somewhere in the neighborhood of 1,200 students on that site again. Again, you're three stories, so you'd have to go through the same same variances and so on that Chris mentioned earlier. And finally, Marshall Road. Again, we recognize the goal is to get as much playing field as possible on a site. We also realize that due to the location in the district, Marshall Road Field probably does not need as much bussing as we've shown, just as an example. And again, one more time, it's just a facility test fit. It's just showing that all the parts and pieces fit here. The interesting thing about this site from our perspective is that you truly can fit 1,200 to 1,400 students worth of capacity on that site, get all of the parking, deal with the flood area that Chris talked about, and actually use that eight acres appropriately. So this this piece of property certainly has some great attributes to it. Challenges, of course, are that it is not owned by the school district, and it is the same issue that Chris talked about with the recreational zoning district, and that it's not a permitted use, and it exceeds the heights. So those are the four sites, and hopefully that leads you through the whole conversation of how many students you can can accommodate, how many you need, and where you might put them. I'll I'll stop for a moment, perhaps, and
Yeah, again, just quickly, we're doing our best for the public to show all of our opportunities. I will say, you're optimistic, and I appreciate your presentations. We feel, at least the administration, and I think this community and the board, we want this last year or yesterday. And every time we bring somebody to do this work, we're presented with so many barriers and obstacles. So your patience in working with us, and Marvin and Tim coming in, having a fresh set of eyes to the school district has been helpful. But it feels overwhelming at times, because there are so many, there isn't one site that you presented today that's like an easy layup for us to to build on. And so I also appreciate the fact that, you know, we've had some conversations with with township folks. They're not against or for anything yet. So I want to make it clear to anybody who's presenting tonight or that's out there, these are just options that are open for discussion. And we're hoping that if the board moves toward this, we can we can further those conversations. The hard part is, even if we were to build on a district property, Cardington, it doesn't meet our overall goals, and it's going to require a lot of zoning changes. So if that's our last opportunity, it's cumbersome to build on there as well.
The the Hillcrest slide, would that be 1,200 additional students on that site, or would that be 1,200 total students on that site? Your net is about 600 students. Thank you. Thank you. And that might actually be a great segue. That is the case with Hillcrest. You are not solving all of the issues there of those sites, the ones that solve all of the issues for the moment, and the one that seems to accommodate the most goals there, of course, is Marshall Road Field, again, not owned by the school district. So that is, at this point, that seems to be the best of the four that we identified. So if you do go forth with one of the topics here, these are all of the pieces of the puzzle that have to be accommodated. And you can certainly read the slides, but the big picture is, we have to approach the township about Marshall Road and just have some conversations about it. We'll develop a true program for the number of students. I think the interesting thing about everything Danielle pointed out to you, that's math. And math does not necessarily equal all of the programs for the students. So we will develop a true program for the building to show that it accommodates all of your needs, and it's not just shifting numbers of students around the district. That's your ultimate goal, not to just shift students around the district. So that's what these, the goal of developing a program specific to these programs is. And you can see that, of course, we will have to work through zoning with a land use attorney at every site to accommodate that. You will have interface with PennDOT. We have interface with PennDOT throughout the region. It happens because so many of the roadways are PennDOT. Chris mentioned the sewer capacity issues with the township. We will have to continue to talk about sewer capacities. This township is not alone. That is, that's a big issue throughout our region also. And of course, all of the issues related to that. So the next step really would be to do all the things that you see on the slide, and get a true site survey with the ALTA and environmental boundary topographic goals. So that's really moving forth what happens next in a project like that.
All right. Thank you so much for that presentation. And I also want to thank you for the collaboration that you've done thus far with members of our administration. It this is an info dump, as far as I'm concerned, and it's a whole lot to consider. So let's take it around the board and see what our colleagues think. So hands raised. Anyone would like to make a comment? Dr. Haig?
Thank you, Director Warren Savage, and thank you all of you for a really informative presentation, and thank you for what has obviously been a huge, huge amount of work. And thank you also to the district team members. I guess I'm just I'm just annoyed. And it's not, it's not at all a reflection on on your work. I'm just frustrated that I think, I think it's clear that really the answer is we need Marshall Road and Cardington. I just that that to me, that seems transparently clear to me. And it just frustrates me that, again, we're going to make a decision for our children based on financial constraints. And I'm the financial constraints are real. They are not made up, and I don't mean to discount them. And unfortunately, the financial burden, because of the way things are in the state, and as much as we'd like them to change faster, they're going to change slowly, if at all. I'm just frustrated that that we're I'm frustrated that we're having this conversation in this way, because there's an obvious real answer. And the obvious real answer is we need both, because I really dislike the idea of this mega school in a part of the district where we don't we don't really quite need it. And anyway, I just, I don't actually have a question, so I apologize for that. But I can't help but express my frustration that even you are sort of forced to make this suboptimal recommendation because of the financial realities. But to me, it's just so clear that we really need both, and I'd really like kids to be able to walk to their school like I get to walk my kids to school, although it takes us a while, because it's a mile, but we can walk a mile. And, well, we're just, no, just over. We have a bus, but we, that's a whole nother topic. Anyway, I would really like us to have walkable schools for our kids, and neighborhood schools for our kids. So I'll get off my soapbox. Thanks.
All right. Any other board members want to make a comment? Vice President Fields?
Thank you, Director Warren Savage. So I want to ask all of you, let's just take a moment, because we had introductions, but take a moment to tell us and the community more about SiteLogic and Schrader Groups and TNM, your experience and history in this area. This is a chance to toot your own horn, okay? I want people, I want the community to better understand the background and experience your companies bring to the table, and if appropriate, provide some examples of other projects that you've worked on and things like that. I just want to establish that in this meeting. So, thank you.
So I'll start with Schrader Group. I appreciate that. So we're a firm that's nineteen years old. I've been in the region, though, for thirty-five years doing planning and design. Did it for another company prior to starting this business. Our office is located in Manayunk. We've worked throughout Chester, Delaware, Montgomery, the city, all of the areas around Bucks. Many of the school districts in Lower Bucks County, we've worked with. Montgomery County, we've, Haprock Horsham is the last one that we are working on right now. We did the Upper Marion New High School project. Several of the school buildings there. Phoenixville Area School District, a number of buildings there. We're doing the new five-six center in Great Valley School District. Worked throughout this area, throughout the city itself. We just finished the Springfield High School project here, as an example. And quite honestly, that bears a lot of resemblance to some of the things you're trying to do, because it's a very similar setting. And we obviously built on the back playing fields and did the teardown of the existing building, and everybody knows that building fairly well. And then plenty of projects throughout the school district of Philadelphia. And we deal with similar situations in all of those areas as well. So we do both the planning that you've heard Danielle talk about, and we do the buildings. And so, we have a pretty good understanding of all the things that you're talking about and the concerns you have. And having lived here for much of my life, and all of the people in our office, we understand the needs and the desires of the communities as well. So hopefully, that's the answer. Okay.
Thank you, David.
So that's hard to top. Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, please.
Go ahead, no.
Okay. So, again, Chris Jensen, TNM Associates. We, TNM has been around for fifty-plus years, and we have done many, many numerous school projects. I've been working in the industry for about twenty years, and had the good fortune to do and work with David on many of the schools that he just described, including Springfield, Delaware County, that has a lot of the challenges and opportunities that we see here. The firm, TNM, we specialize in land development permitting and approvals, and being able to work closely with our clients and owners for understanding what they need, and making sure that we expedite the approval process. And we really like to think we're experts with stormwater management, which is a big topic right now in the civil engineering world and in general. And we also have quite a bit of experience with floodplains. We actually have a contract and work with FEMA directly, so we have been doing this for many years.
Thank you. So SiteLogic's been around, SiteLogic's been around for twenty-plus years. In fact, we were known as Reynolds Companies up to five years ago, so maybe you recognize that name. But like Schrader, we have worked in the Delaware Valley, Delaware County, Chester County, Bucks, Montgomery County, Philadelphia school districts. We just finished the new Black Rock Middle School for Lower Marion. We're working at Great Valley School District right now in their five-six center. We were over at Abington. We've worked with over a hundred school districts across the state of Pennsylvania. Prior to SiteLogic, you know, we were known as mechanical electrical plumbing engineers, construction managers. When we were acquired by SiteLogic, we picked up a lot of planning services. So now, we do planning, design, construction, building commissioning. And so, in addition to doing a lot of projects with the Schrader Group, we bring a lot of procurement methods when it comes time to, come times for construction, excuse me. Yeah.
Fantastic. Thank you very much. I'll save any comments you might have for, at the end.
All right. I believe President Brown also wanted to share some feedback.
Thank you. I think you kind of answered one of my questions, thanks, Don, in describing the experience of your firms. I was going to say, you know, our challenges, and like Dr. Haig said, our challenges are frustrating, looking at the cons, because there's no one solution that doesn't have them. But I was going to say, I was going to ask if our challenges are unique, but it sounds like they're not. It sounds like, you know, everybody gives the appearance of been there, done that, we got you, you know, no matter which one we choose. And that gives me optimism. So, you know, obviously, we're all very passionate, as you can probably gather, about providing equitable opportunities for our students in our district. And it's frustrating not being able to do that in the right way, and having overcrowded middle schools and overcrowded schools is really disheartening. But the challenges that you see before us, no matter which option we choose, they're attainable. Is that the consensus of this distinguished panel?
Maybe the presentation has a slight air of negativity, only because it's showing the things that you have to surmount in order to get a project done. And the unique thing about our region is, we have so many constraints, we have so many tight sites that we have to work with, that I can think that the majority of school districts that we do this kind of planning for, unfortunately, we're coming in with a little bit of negativity to show you all the things that you have to deal with. In general, all of those things that we discussed are surmountable.
Okay.
And so, moving forth is a project, but that's why they call it a project.
Got it.
Yep.
Thank you for that, and thank you for your work. It's comprehensive and very detailed, and I can, you know, being a long-term school board director and working on PlanCon and being part of the EdSpecs Committee years ago, I appreciate the detail and the level of work that goes into this, and thank you for working with our all-star team in getting us to this point, so we really appreciate it.
All right. And next, we will be hearing from Director Mitchell.
Thank you so much. Mr. Brown and I have gone to many conferences where we've very quickly skirted past your group, knowing that we probably would never be able to afford it. So we're in a place now where, thanks to the ARPA funds, that we're able to really have this in-depth assessment of our district. But I did have one question, and maybe I'm getting ahead, but this is the first site presentation, and Dr. McGary, maybe you can talk about this, that we didn't see any recommendations for an addition onto any of our existing buildings to accommodate some of the capacity issues. Just speaking in terms of what Dr. Haig said about the sort of very large school, and I would sort of like to hear from you guys about that, why you didn't look at that as part of your assessment, and also from Dr. McGary, about how you would make smaller schools in a very large school, if that seems to be the recommendation. So the first question is for you guys. Why didn't you look at any existing buildings? Okay.
Yeah, so terminology we're using, and I really want to make sure that this is clear, sometimes in education, we use terminology, it's probably one of the worst industries for acronyms, although I'm sure the engineers around the table and others would say. But public education is horrible when it comes to acronyms and terminology that we expect, you know, everybody to pick up on. I was on a call the other night for special education, and PTAN has a glossary of terms. It would just paralyze any parent who's trying to advocate for their child. It's really overwhelming. EdSpecs is a term that we heard about today, and Dave did an excellent job of talking about the fact that, look, what you have on here is one part of it. Anybody, and we've had presentations years ago, I will not go through that, where it was almost if you could move bedpans around or split kids in half. It doesn't work that way. Programmatically, there are spaces that are needed for specific programming. Here in Upper Arby, we're not trying to go out there, and no knock on any school district that can do that, that we're just trying to create a STEM school. We are not even able to even think about that conceptually right now, because we're so hindered by space. However, if we did want to look at the middle schools and redesigning it, and STEM became part of the EdSpecs, or that became part of the process of using those spaces, as Dave said, that work then begins to talk about the educational programming that should really drive how you build a school. Not just fit ten kids here, five kids here, or three kids there. It should be, what educational programs do you want to provide to kids in the district? I did not ask Tim, Marvin, Craig, or this group to think about cutting classrooms in half at Hillcrest. I did not ask about putting another two stories on top of Garretford Elementary School. We did not ask this fine distinguished group to do that. I'm sure they would have been able to figure that out. But we did not ask them to take what we already have, our overcrowded cramped spaces, and add additions and spaces onto that. We reviewed that in the past, much like the presentation with Hillcrest tonight. I think that would run me out of town, literally, if I had a construction project happening on that area, where construction, where traffic is a nightmare every day, and bussing is a nightmare in Hillcrest every day, much like it is in Highland Park. So if I were to say to Hillcrest, we're going to add four-hundred more students in that building that way, or Highland Park, or Garretford, on a postage stamp, I think they'd be frustrated with that concept. Now, someone's going to ask the question, as Dr. Haig has previously and tonight, you know, why not Cardington and this? As I said to Dr. Haig, and I'm going to say to everybody, I'd like to do it everywhere. The reality is, my job is financially to bring forward to this board what we can try to pull off long-term and short-term. If we could build schools in all these areas and afford it, that'd be a different conversation. We're trying to do this in the most efficiency, with staffing, which is limited right now. Getting kids to school and transportation, which this site might be the best for that. And trying to make it a smaller learning environment. So what we didn't go through tonight, because it would be a lot to digest, and we'll get there if you give us permission to look at it, is, okay, begin to look at that building, if it were to take place on Cardington, on Sixty-Ninth Street, on Marshall Road, how could we make a larger school function as a smaller school? Obviously, we like the recommendation of Marshall Road. We have miles to go before we can get there. We would create almost two schools on one campus. So essentially, a one through, one and two building, or a one through three, and a four and five. Each would have, you know, a principal and an assistant principal on location there. We would work that out with the group that we would bring onboard to design that. The key right now is to find a space, which we've delivered to you, we think, a couple spaces. And now, it's up to you, the elected officials, to say to me and our team, let's go back to the drawing board and see what we can have. I don't disagree with the commentary about walking schools. I think that's a wonderful concept. We just, it's very hard to pull that off here in Upper Arby. Even Cardington will have significant pushbacks, and it's small. So we'll still probably need modular classrooms and de-leased facilities in order to do that. So it's not their lack of planning. I did not ask them to explore those options.
Yeah, I asked the question very specifically because we've had these presentations before. And I know that these are questions that are going to come from the community, but we saw this presentation one other time, where they did this and that. And I appreciate your explanation, and I think this is the far best presentation that we've had so far, that really looks at solving all of our problems. Just one point of clarity, though, because the slides are really small, it's hard to see. The, this recommendation would not, like, the Kelly School would not exist anymore, correct?
Yeah, so throughout this conversation, what we've been trying to do, and this is important, I appreciate you that. Dave, if you guys want to jump in with what I just said, feel free about the additions and renovations. But many, many years ago, and Board President Brown brought this up, and Rachel, you were a part of this conversation, we said, and for me, as an educator, it feels like it's not happening fast enough. We're talking about five and six years to get to this moment, right? So we did some preliminary review. In my opinion, nowhere near the professional detail that's been provided tonight. So what we have tonight is far superior to anything we've ever had as an administrator in this school district. And I, again, want to compliment to Tim and Marvin and this group. And again, the principals who are meeting, on top of running their schools, to try to say how they're using a stage, or reading and music is taken outside of the boiler room. I mean, at Senko, music lessons are taking place in a hallway, right? So how do we make those things, make those things fit? But the EdSpecs process of years ago was painful. And then I inherited that process, and we were operating on our own out of a book. You know, I went to school, English and History and Education, not school construction, right? So we were running kind of these meetings on our own, and Ed was a part of that as a parent. And we started to realize on our own, like, hey, if we start to shift boundaries around and do elementary schools, what's that going to do to the middle schools that are overcrowded? We probably did do a middle school and an elementary school. And so, this work and this planning is years in the making. We have explored additions and renovations to other places. Do I think as well as this has been done? No. So that is a conversation, I'm glad you brought that up. If the board wanted that to be explored, we could explore it. I don't think that's the best way for us to go right now. I think this process that we went through makes the most sense. Adding more students to those overcrowded facilities, I think, is probably not a good idea. Does that mean, down the line, if the enrollment explodes, we may have to look at that again? Maybe we will. And I think that's the Dr. Haig's point, build both schools.
All righty, thank you. Before we take more additional, oh, I'm sorry, Director. Anyone else want to make comment before we take any additional? All right?
Just for the presenters, you don't have to turn around and face me. No, it's awkward. I'm very used to it, so you can just face forward, you can look at Mr. Rogers if you'd like, just straight ahead. So, you know, this is my, I guess it's our fourth year, school board director, you know, I was elected in, my God, I don't even know, nineteen, right? Was that one? Yeah, nineteen, jeez. You know, the largest construction project that I've been part of was the Clifton Heights Middle School. And that's still, like, when are we going to get kids in a classroom, you know, in Clifton Heights Middle School? And what I really liked from that project, and the analysis that came from that, was, you know, you had three feeders, three elementary schools that went into each middle school. And it provided sort of a nice, defined pathway into the high school. You had three elementary schools, one of those three could provide autistic support, you know, emotional support. That way, it services that community, those students proceed to that middle school, and then the middle school proceeds to the high school. And so, I really enjoyed that. And I'm afraid, and I hope Clifton Heights was, I hope that gets built. I mean, you know, the board has approved that, you know, we're still moving forward with that. You know, I'd love to see the building up tomorrow, but it's been such a long time, and I'm honestly, and I appreciate the presenter's effort and the administration's effort, but I am like so sick and tired of going over these presentations of what we could do, but then really, nothing happens. Why, you know, we hit log jams through municipal government, state government, federal government, you know, because we're not properly funded, and there's red tape we have to go through. And it just seems like a never-ending cycle. And I know we would like to get these buildings built sooner rather than later. And a concern I have with, you know, I understand the large concept, elementary school being broken into smaller schools, but, you know, I had a vision, and I kind of echo what Dr. Haig said, with neighborhood schools. I truly believe that's what's needed at the elementary level, where we have smaller schools, i.e., I truly believe Cardington deserves a school in that area. I would really like to see that happen. And honestly, I think, you know, Bywood, Stonehurst- And honestly, I think, you know, Bywood, Stonehurst, both of those schools honestly need to be knocked down and rebuilt and, you know, utilize those footprints as as much as possible. And so they have updated classrooms. Obviously, this is a lot of money we're talking about, and we have another agenda item coming up about the conditions of our schools and the amount of money that is needed for that. And so it's, it comes down to money. And and I, it's difficult to think, one, where is this money going to come from? You know, because we can't bleed the rock anymore out of our local taxpayers. You know, two, our students are really going to be all over the place. I know we're providing transportation. You're saying to, like, 69th Street, that would be a lot of transportation. It also is neighboring about like two blocks over to Lansdowne, so it's not in an area that's really, we're seeing the largest growth. And and my last thing I want to talk about is a is a request from the the presenters is, I think I would like to see, not a presentation, but the information regarding the other elementary schools. If Clifton Heights, the plan that the board approved, was ran through the capacity numbers that you mentioned, and you compared then Drexel Hill, Beverly Hills, and the Clifton Heights middle schools, what would those percentages then look like according to usage? I would like to get an understanding on where, what we thought we wanted to build there, because now is the time to go back and say, you know what, we got to redesign Clifton Heights because these numbers are not acceptable. And so do we need to change something? Because I don't want to build a school and then, in, like in Wallingford-Swathmore, where they built the middle school, and all of a sudden, now they're talking about it's overcrowded, and they built it 10 years ago. And so now they're talking about, do we need to change anything? Do we need to add an addition? Do we need to reconstruct some classrooms, which they've already done? So I don't want to spend money, and then in 10 years, we have to spend money again by doing an expansion of a school or expansion of of a site already. So I would request that maybe the fuller report be provided to the board and to the public so they can view their own neighborhood schools and really just take a look at the data. But I understand the administration has access to all this, and I truly appreciate the presenters developing all of this information, because it's the first time that I believe the administration really has clarity on what our resources are in in the schools, our facilities, our land, the township's land, the borough land, and what the possibilities are. And so I appreciate you providing clarity to them on possible solutions on where we can go as a district. But I still think, you know, there's a lot of options to consider, and I know the board is going to have a robust conversation in the upcoming months, upcoming years, I'm sure, regarding next steps. So like, to walk away, I know that was like a long winded speech, I just kind of kept rambling on, but a request to really see the numbers for all schools, to make sure that's available to the public as well, so they can view their own neighborhood school, like, for example, Garrettford. I know the schools were selected because they were the highest number, the highest capacity percentages, and I know that's why that was selected. Also, could I see the comparison of if, let's say Clifton Heights did exist right now, what would the capacity issues be for those three schools altogether? And and I kind of wanted to look at that.
I just want to jump in there and just say that I believe in this presentation, part of that was addressed, that when the Clifton Heights Middle School is developed and built, it will get the two middle schools. So what Danielle presented is that getting the schools down, it gets them closer to that room utilization that we'd like to have happen. Again, back to the ed specs, we ask this to be developed outside of teaming, which restricts classroom use as well. We're essentially using this based on homerooms, so our middle school design is almost following a high school design versus middle school teaming and how that changes the use of spaces. But we did look at the middle schools, and the recommendation is to move forward with that, because that gets you closer and better. Dave, to your question, and you've done this many, many times, and I applaud you for always trying to sneak this in, and I appreciate it, and this is, this is important, you'd like to see us build as big a building in Clifton or a larger sized building as possible. And I respect that. The problem is, just to get to where we are, we had to settle in a written agreement on that property. And to exceed that capacity is going to maybe set us back even even farther than where than where we are right now. As far as the elementary schools are concerned, I also think that is in this presentation. If you look at utilizing those spaces and flesh out the use and the capacity there and keep them in play, you can add those classrooms and you could see what percentage of use is there if you were to keep them in play. What we're saying is, and we don't disagree, in an ideal situation, maybe knocking down Bywood or Stonehurst or somewhere else if for a new school, although they are, have held up tremendously well, right? For almost 100 years, they're still in really good shape. So if you look at that eventual presentation we'll get to tonight, I hope, the red, the green, the yellow, they're still in really relatively pretty good shape, given that they were built in the 1920s, some in the 1930s. And so that speaks to good school construction and how long they've lasted here in the community. The problem with getting to the neighborhood schools is, the last part I want to add, staffing and efficiency, right? Many, there are some models, and Dave's the architect here, he could tell me if I'm wrong, some school districts have moved to larger schools because there is efficiency in use of staffing. Because we noticed when we reviewed this, and we haven't done this whole publicly yet, but we've a school at Marshall Road actually allows us to make better use of special education, Where staffing is a limitation right now. So if we do build smaller neighborhood schools, how are we going to staff them? And what's that cost and what's that, what's that, what's that location? We're a school district that has almost 2,000 hundred, now it's over 2,000. So, or getting to be over 2,000. So as we look at that, that just space and personnel, what can't you hire right now? Reading specialists, EL teachers, special education teachers, science teachers, math teachers, and sadly, elementary school teachers are fewer and far between. So if we spread out all these neighborhood schools too, in the current staffing situation, we looked at how do we staff that? This Marshall Road actually frees up staffing. Dave, I don't know if you want to add anything, if I mess anything up.
No, not, not, not a thing. It's just to supplement that a little bit, and I know we want to get to Melissa's presentation as well. So from, just to give you the the true functional capacity based upon your ed specs, it's the third column from the right there. And I, it's tiny on purpose, so you can't read it. That's, that's, I'm just kidding. So if you, if you've seen this, the document basically shows, with the exception of two schools, you're essentially 500 to 600 students capacity in each of the buildings. Now, ironically, you've just added capacity to, so that's the one that pops up above that. So that gives you a sense of how all the schools would function if you used your ed specs to design those. You mentioned two other things. We recognize the constraints that you have with Clifton Heights, and I'm, I'm not quite sure how that parlay's into a total population, but I do know that the design that is being undertaken for that is at least done with contemporary design concepts. They're not looking at the idea of packing it like a high school would be packed, homeroom in every room. They are looking more at the idea of at least teaming clusters, whether it's teaming or not. It's got kids in basic homerooms, and then the specials are being used as the outflow spaces. So, so the capacity there will be quite different. To the, to the question, and it's now been brought up three times, of the large school, well, it's important to address these. One district that we worked with that did something very similar was Bristol Township. And and anybody who knows the whole Levittown community know that Bill Levitt donated property. I'm not sure if he actually built the schools, I can't remember that part of the story. But the schools all ended up within walking distance within each of those neighborhoods. And the district could not maintain those nine elementary schools any longer in the the shape that they were in. And so we, as a team, went back and built three 1,250 student schools, and they're all schools within schools. So it's two small learning communities of 600 students each, and then they share a common core spaces. And those three sit not within a mile walking distance now, but now a two mile circumference. It's kind of an interesting little analysis of that part of Levittown. There's a kind of a fun presentation about it, too. But it's a good example of how you can build the smaller learning communities on the site. Because we point out all sides of things, we think, yes, you would have 1,200 students on a site. No, you wouldn't have 1,200 students in each of the schools. They would be two distinct 600 student schools that would match all of the sizes that you've talked about here. So that's just a little bit more support of Dr. McGarry.
Yeah, thank you. I, I, I agree with a lot of, with what you're saying. I love the efficiencies of a large school because it saves money. I mean, I love that, and it solves a lot of the problems that we see within the Human Resource Department in getting new employees. But on the next slide for the middle school, if you wanted to go to that one, I mean, I want to make sure I'm understanding this correctly as well. So you have the functional use capacity. So for example, Beverly Hills is 675, Drexel Hill is 648, based off your analysis and the, the ed specs that you utilized from January 2023. Now, based off of that, you're saying that should, that should be the maximum population of the school, is that correct? No, so so what does that number mean in relation to the population of the school?
May I take that?
Okay. So you're not the one who gets it wrong, I'll get it wrong. Look, ed specs is the ideal that we're working toward. I should have said this in the beginning, and Dave can back me up. We're trying to get there. No matter what we do, it's going to be very hard for us to get 100% ed specs in our schools in this district. And I should have said that, and I apologize at the beginning that I didn't. So the class size guidelines, it took us months and months, if not a year or so, that were meant simply to plan. An architect needs something to think about when they plan. We had to, it took us months, Ed and Rachel and others, to get class size guidelines. They're not policy, they're simply allowed us to figure out what we would like to work toward. Is that going to be perfect at every single school when this is all said and done? No, because not every neighborhood has the exact number of first graders, second graders, third graders living in the same street. Same thing with this. We ideally want to get to ed specs, but as Dave said earlier, some building is going to have to work with us on emotional support. Some building is going to have to be autistic support and life skills support. We simply don't have the space or the teachers to run that in every single school. So when we flesh this out, the ideal, the ideal, perfect scenario, to your point, Dave, is that if we plan our planning out and we try to get there, this would be the perfect scenario. And you might not like what I'm going to say right now, but we're never, in this current environment, without building everywhere, going to be perfect in every ed spec scenario that we want to get to. It's also a moving target in Upper Arby. As you heard in the enrollment trends, we had to use a different part to figure out future enrollments, because there's multiple occupancies in Upper Arby. There's over 1,000 multiple occupancies. That's also somewhat considered homelessness, because they're doubling up or living in multiple families. Foster care, right? We've almost, we have 100 students who are in foster care. So we have a lot of complicated factors that come into play. When you look at Upper Arby School District, support affidavit, students living with somebody else, multiple occupancies, special education, English learners, we're larger when you add those numbers up than almost every single Delaware County school district. And it's very hard to put your finger on predicting those enrollment trends every year. That's another moving target with these ed specs that we have. And so I should have said this in the beginning, and I apologize, but getting to the ed specs is difficult. And to your point, Dave, it looks like, I know where you're going with this, I think, it looks like we need a middle school of at least 1,300 students to solve all the problems. In a perfect world, you're not wrong. Unfortunately, it's not a perfect situation for us. Dave, Dave from Schrader?
I take the volley. So the, I wish that I knew the exact numbers, and normally, I would have looked up your old PlanCon numbers to understand what Beverly Hills and Drexel Hills capacities were based upon the old numbers, and I'll go back to that in one second. So Dr. McGarry's point is ideal. So the term would be ideal. If you had your ideal opportunity, it would be, it would be four sets of classrooms or five sets of classrooms, depending on how the program runs, of students, and that's school one or team one. Team two, team three, team four. Those kids feed out into all of those special spaces that they need. That's today's methodology, if you can plan a building like that. And I said if, so that's pretty important. But what happened in '73 and '74 with with what you heard of early on, PlanCon, was they developed a process where the junior high school, which evolved into the middle school, was categorized very similarly to a high school. And so a homeroom meant that the kids went into all of the spaces in the building, and the 85 to 90% utilization gave you the room in the building just for the students to circulate to the next room that they were going to. The new concept for middle, middle school education, not junior high, middle school, is that you're setting up teaming clusters with the specials for people to go to specifically. So my guess is, if we went back and did the old and original formulas that these buildings were built around, they're probably 1,200 to 1,500 student buildings per Pennsylvania Original Conversations. So you can see that these buildings do handle that capacity, it's what's ideal, and I think that's what Dr. McGarry was getting to.
Okay, yeah, thank you. And I was actually having trouble to see who Dr. McGarry was talking to, because my first name's David as well. So he said, Dave, and he's, yeah, and he's looking, he's looking at both of us, and I'm thinking, who's he talking to? Yes, yes, I mean, that's what, from, and this is why, like, this is getting so depressing, because like, from the numbers, I'm like, oh, my gosh, we need two new middle schools. You know, it's like, we're working so hard just to get one new middle school, but you're, now you're telling me, just to meet really the current capacity numbers and what an educational building should look like, we need to actually have two? So, yeah, it was just mind boggling to me that the the numbers were like that. And I assume, based off of Clifton Heights, we'd probably be at like a 120, 125% in that last column for the functional operating capacity. That's where I think we would end up for those three middle schools, which, I mean, with renovating and using spaces like we do now, and how creative the, like, the administration is, it's so, it's a lot more doable than just having the two middle schools. So I, I think that would put us in a, in a great place. But, yeah, so, once again, I know, I'm wrapping up. A request for the public to see their neighborhood schools, a site analysis of that school, what their numbers would look like. I know we, we reviewed just the highest ones, but I would like to see that as well for, for the neighborhoods. And this concludes my comments.
I yield back.
I'm Director War Savage.
All right. Any other feedback from board members?
I am really talking.
Vice President Fields, one more time.
Thank you. I just want to, and I'm trying to remember what I was going to say, but I just wanted to go touch, I wanted, we have this analysis, we were using SiteLogic, Schrader Group, TNM, because of the ARP money, right? And what they, we had money to invest in a better analysis, a more thorough analysis, a more complete picture, right? Whereas before, it was the administration, volunteers from the community
Reading out of a book.
Reading out of a book, doing that work. So these numbers now will look different. I would hope so, because we actually spent real money that was provided by Washington to, to really look at where we were. And so for the folks that are going to say, wait a second, eight years ago, I saw a presentation, or seven years ago, I saw a presentation, understand that that was a good effort, but not a complete picture, and we have a more complete picture now. And so the number's going to be different, what we see is going to be different, the, the concepts and ideas floated before are not applicable, are not relevant, are not as valid as what we have here. And so people have to keep that in mind, right? And so a little bit of money goes a long way, and that's what we have here. Thanks.
I can hear.
All right. And as a final comment from the board, I just want to mention that there have been many lessons learned from previous projects and things that either we've done or are currently in the process of doing. And I'm hoping that as conversations continue, if it's the will of the board and whatever else happens in partnership with the township, that we do make positives of those lessons, because one of the things that the presentation also might have considered but didn't come out and say it, we also have to think about people who feel that they need to be, to have their rights adjudicated by a judge, if they feel that the planning, something is wrong, they want to throw a lawsuit or things like that. It just elongates the timeframe that we have to work with, and as is directly evident by the math in the Clifton Heights project, it wasn't the sole reason reason why prices, or the price of the project increased, but because we lost that time in going back and forth in a non, sometimes really deconstructive way with each other, it lost valuable time and prices increased just by that alone. So, just want to keep that in mind. All right. I believe we are ready for agenda item number two.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Melissa Kohlstock. I am the Director of Deliverables here for SiteLogic. And I am here to talk to you about the facility condition assessment. I will be highlighting the process that we go through. We'll be talking about some of the conditions that we found within your facilities and just some of the findings and summaries there. So, let's start. Did you know that your school district and what we assessed has about just over 1.4 million square feet? That is a lot of buildings to cover. And we have spent a significant time within that square footage. And it's intimidating, but we always have to start with the foundation. And the way that we start with that is through kind of breaking down and understanding the different categories of a facility and how we approach that assessment. So, what you can see on the left-hand side are kind of those big buckets that we start to kind of pull and separate your facilities into. So, we're looking at things like architectural finishes, the classroom additions that have been added throughout the years, the building envelope, which is the exterior skin of your facilities. We're considering things like grounds or site features. We're looking at MEP systems, things that inform our spaces, but maybe we can't always see because they're not available to your eyes. We also consider things like ADA code compliance specialties. For those of you not familiar, it'd be something like toilet partitions within your bathroom facilities. And we also are looking at your security systems. The list on the right-hand side of the screen are the facilities that we've included within this assessment. What you'll notice is Aronamic is excluded. That facility has been prioritized and those needs are currently being met through a construction project. So, that has been excluded. Walter Senko and Charles Kelly are leased by the district. So, those were also excluded from that. So, we're truly just looking at this portfolio of facilities within the district. How we approach the building assessment happens several different ways, but I think most notably, and where we spend a lot of time, is physically within your spaces. It's what we call like our forensic data collection. So, on the screen, what you can see is maybe a collection of some of the resources that we're using whenever we are compiling this information. The upper left-hand side is a photograph. We're taking 360 photos, 360-degree photos of your spaces, all of the spaces within your schools and the exterior of the building. This is truly part of documenting that rooftop to blacktop. And we are actually on top of your roofs, taking photos. What comes out of that are things like that floor plan that you can see down below on the left-hand side. It's just an example of a flooring condition assessment. So, we are noting the type and condition of the flooring throughout your space. In addition to that forensic observation, we are also discussing with your staff, what's going on with your buildings. How are your different systems performing? We are making notes and taking notes from operations and maintenance manuals, as well as trying to gain information from any district vendors. So, where does this information land? Well, we're taking everything that we see through our site evaluations, everything that we're hearing from those conversations, and it lands on that sheet that you're seeing there. It's a lot of data. I know you probably can't read it. It's okay. It's just here as an example. So, you can kind of see the level of detail that we are assessing in your facilities. So, we're noting your facility, your system, the system description, areas served, age and condition and priority. How we establish priority is important. And I want to break that, this down for a little bit. And I appreciate your patience as I walk you through this explanation. But it's, it's two-part, okay? So, when we look at an asset, we're evaluating how it is performing in place. And then, we are looking also at the age and life expectancy. You can see we've kind of broken that down because as far as equipment age and life expectancy, we're considering things like the average life expectancy of that piece of equipment. We're looking at things like the equipment installation date, the actual age of the equipment, the percent of life expectancy used, and the remaining life and a potential replacement year. All of these things are informing the condition. The condition is then informing the repair or replacement priority. And that priority level is informing a timeline in when you should plan to address that. That's laid down, excuse me, on that table that's down below. So, if we just take a look at the asset condition, I want you to think of it as a traffic light, okay? Green, you're good to go. It's acceptable condition. We are noting it here as part of our assessment. That is priority level five. This is, these are assets that we know will be in good operating order, you know, for 10-plus years. Caution, we're asking you to pause a little bit. Your equipment is operating in a slightly degraded condition. Repair, excuse me, repair, replace is recommended within six to eight years. Alert comes next. And then, we also have alarm, which is priority two. So, equipment failure is inevitable, essentially. And we want you to start putting together a plan within zero to two years to address that. Why would it be failing? Several different reasons. Sometimes the equipment is obsolete. Sometimes you can't get parts. So, we're making those recommendations because we've been informed by our expertise with our condition assessments. Excuse me. As we move, just before we talk about the Upper Darby High School and get into kind of the district-wide discussion about these assessments, I think it's incredibly important to note that there is a lot of love within this district for your facilities. And how do we know this? Well, we know this because whether we're either virtually walking through your buildings, through those 360 photos, or we are just physically interacting with your staff, we can see what's going on. We're not seeing a lot of like defacement of property. There is not a ton of graffiti. These buildings are well cared for at every level. So, before I highlight what we found in the building assessments, which unfortunately can seem a little negative, I just want to preemptively say that because I think it's important to note. So, let's start by talking about Upper Darby High School. I'm not going to read everything on here. What I'd like to do is just take a few moments to highlight a few of the things that we found. What you'll note throughout this assessment is, we're going to be, I'll be repeating myself a lot. And that will inform our summary findings a little bit later. So, what we're seeing here within the high school are things like air handling equipment, which is AHU, so above the auditorium. These are a high priority because of the wear and tear within those systems. We're also seeing other things like the metal casework in the, in the classrooms. It's aging. We can see from the photograph on the bottom left that it's out of date. And while it could be well maintained, functionally, it's not very useful. We're starting to see things like the acoustical ceiling tiles. They're starting to get a little warped, a little stained in some cases. And this is informing us of the age and potentially lack of humidity control within those spaces. The exterior envelope of the building, which is that center picture there, it's difficult to see in the photo, but we're noting that there is some masonry restoration that we would like to see in select areas in addition to some of the window systems that could use either upgrade or replacement. Lastly, that takes us to your rooftop where we're looking at the air handling units there. Those have been prioritized for slightly later, six to eight years. But generally, within 10 years, these are some of those high priority items that we'd like you to consider. Next, moving on to Beverly Hills Middle School, looking at the auditorium. There are finishes within that space that could use upgrading. And the same is the case for the classrooms that we can see kind of priority, three to five years, carpeting, window treatments, ceiling tiles, et cetera, starting to show their age from daily wear and tear. Similar to the high school, a little bit later, looking to address HVAC, terminal equipment within this facility, things like the boiler, air handling unit, chillers, pumps. It's aging. And we would just like to note the recommendation for planning for repair or replacement of those systems. Drexel Hills Middle School, again, what we're noting here is the door hardware. It doesn't need code. What does that mean? Well, instead of like a lever, which would be appropriate for anyone that maybe has some sort of disability, we're seeing more knob-type hardware. So, our recommendation is to replace that. So, it is a more fully accessible facility. Again, here, we're seeing things like ceiling tile and flooring that is ready for replacement. Certain conditions exist with concrete floors and corridors that maybe require an updated finish. And similar to the other facilities, you know, we're looking at rooftop units and other types of mechanical electrical plumbing equipment recommended for upgrades in the near future. Garrett Ford Elementary School, once again, we're on the exterior of the building and we're seeing some masonry or stone repointing or replacement in addition to caulking maintenance in select areas around the windows. We know those are newer windows and they're performing as they should, but we're noticing that some of the caulking around them is failing. And our recommendation is to recaulk those. Inside the facilities, there is some dated casework. Those are, that's wood casework and not necessarily the most sanitary type of finish to have within a classroom. And certainly, if it was upgraded, it could provide a little bit more functional storage for the teachers within that space. On the far right, what we're seeing is the public address clock, fire alarm systems, which are functional, but are operating at the end of their rated useful life. And our recommendation is to plan to replace those. Highland Park is similar to Garrett Ford with some of those finishes upgrades that we would like to see. The acoustical ceiling tile, once again, in the corridors is kind of cupping. And we can, we also noted staining throughout the facility. Casework, once again, you'll hear me repeat that, is heavily utilized, but could potentially be upgraded for better functionality. Again, at this school, we're looking at HVAC equipment or terminal equipment within the facility and things like boilers, chillers, pumps, fire alarm, PA clock systems, while in acceptable condition and within their useful life, are starting to age out. And recommendations to put a plan in place to address that. Hillcrest Elementary School, the left-hand side picture, we're looking at a unit ventilator in one of the classrooms. It is in need of repair or replacement, and we are recommending that as a higher priority. Similar to the other facilities, the exterior brick masonry veneer is in poor condition. And we are recommending an overall masonry restoration, repointing, et cetera. And then, last priority for the school would be more HVAC equipment. Primus Elementary School, here, we can see that beautifully unique canopy, but unfortunately, what we see are these exposed steel columns. And the entrance to the facility is maybe responding to environmental conditions. So, we're recommending a higher level of maintenance here to address those issues and get ahead of that. Similar to the other elementary schools, what we're seeing are the doors where they are, they do not have ADA accessible hardware. Looking at actually addressing a secure vestibule within this facility potentially because this facility does not have one. So, finishes also would require an update. We can see that from that center photograph where we can see the ceilings. We can see some of the casework in the doors and the floors there, starting to age out of their useful life. Similar, like all of the other facilities that we talked about, are some of those HVAC equipment, specifically controls the electrical distribution and fire alarm Bywood Elementary School, a lot of finishes here have started to age out of their useful life. We're seeing the unit ventilators within the classrooms, again, ceilings, flooring, finishes throughout the building. And on the exterior, some of those, the window systems are older, as well as the exterior doors. And we're recommending those are slated for replacement and a higher priority in, you know, zero to five years. Mechanically, there is terminal equipment in addition to the classroom unit ventilators and the radiators in the corridors that we are recommending for replacement or updating with a new system. Stonehurst is another elementary school where we're seeing a lot of deficiencies that were noted, notably within the boiler room there. You can see the domestic hot water heater. We're recommending for replacement, additional unit cabinet heater replacement. I won't go on with that, but this building is one of the older buildings from 1926. It did have a 1988 addition, but in both cases, we are recommending the masonry restoration on the exterior of the building. Here, we're also seeing HVAC, mechanical electrical plumbing equipment upgrades that were noted during the assessment that are starting to age out. And we'd like to see those addressed within three to five years. Just go ahead and move on to Westbrook Park. Similar to the other school, there are a lot of finishes here. So, ceiling finishes, flooring finishes. Here, we saw the gym bleachers as maybe being a higher priority than in the other facilities. I believe this one has the wood bleachers. And I don't know if those are actually accessible. So, once again, casework and carpeting finishes requires an upgrade, as do the door hardware to make it ADA accessible. Once again, within the 68-year timeline or priority four timeline, we're talking about equipment. So, condensing units, electrical distribution, some of the fire alarm systems, public address and clock systems. Here, you know, we're seeing lighting, fixtures and equipment are kind of operating in a degraded condition. I think during the assessment of this facility, we can see some of the lights were out, which was okay. But we just wanted to note that. Exterior doors are also not accessible. And then, once again, we're seeing the masonry or the brick facade deterioration. We're recommending for masonry That brings us to the Kindergarten Center. Here, again, we're seeing equipment like the domestic hot water heater. This is excessively past its useful life. We are recommending it for replacement. Other areas include finishes. The vinyl composition tile has some gaps. We're seeing just general finishes upgrades throughout. I think notably, what we've seen are many, many miles of chalkboard, which has either been been repurposed into a tack board or has been covered by whiteboards, which is fine, just something to consider, for the district to consider about how you're using those spaces in the future. And lastly, you know, lighting upgrades with the clock and PA, fire alarm systems, et cetera, within this. And I know I went very, very quickly through all of these facilities, but I would just like to pause and see if there are any questions about what we were presenting tonight. Okay, thank you. So, we talked about the condition of the facilities. We talked about prioritizing those. We talked about the timeline to do that. The last piece of information that we felt was essential was the cost or the budget to do that, and to understand what is it going to take for these facilities to be brought up to current standards. So that's what you're seeing here. Now, because we've had many, many, many lines of facility improvement measures, we're not going to show you all of that. So what we've done is just kind of summarized it into kind of larger, more digestible charts, and then we'll talk about a district-wide facility assessment cost. So what you're seeing here is the first assessment that is considering the building envelope. So everything on the outside of the building that was assessed. And we can see all of the different conditions along the top, and then we can see all of the totals and the timelines with which we would associate that with. So what you will see here, and also with the rest of the financial information that we are presenting tonight, is the bulk of the facility maintenance is going to be required within the alarm, the alert caution, or essentially the first 10 years. That's what we are, that's kind of the timeline that I want you to focus on. So as we move forward and we start looking at the architectural assessments, we can see these numbers are starting to grow. Again, alarm, alert, caution, and we can start to see along the bottom, the totals, what that equals. Here, we are considering all of the mechanical, electrical plumbing needs that I spoke of before. This is a little bit unique, because as we talk about what will it take to bring a facility up to current standards, that also includes certain comfort standards. And the district has asked us to consider mechanical cooling in spaces. So you are seeing that here. So we have all of your conditions, and then we're adding air conditioning to these spaces, and then we're coming up with a new district-wide total. And here's, here's what it looks like, district-wide facility maintenance. I will say, this chart does exclude the air conditioning. Okay, this is excluding that air conditioning, but I, we wanted to give you a sense of kind of what it would take and the timeline in which it could take for this. I'm just going to pause for a second if there are any questions. So when districts are presented with information like this, it can be overwhelming, but you do definitely. Is that an understatement? I'm sorry. And you start to ask yourself questions, or districts ask questions, right? A lot of the times, the questions that we ask is the cost to, is the cost to maintain this facility going to exceed the cost to replace it? Okay? We have to start having that conversation, and that's what we'll start to explore here. The way that it is determined whether it is worthwhile to repair or replace is the use and implementation of what's called the Facility Condition Index. It is a industry standard numerical value of condition and identifies need for renewal or replacement. So we've simplified the equation for you there. It is literally the cost of needed repairs and maintenance divided by the cost to replace. That equals your facility condition index, or your facility condition score. That table down below is giving you the range. So, less than 15%, minimal current capital funding required to maintain it. This would be a runic elementary school as soon as construction's done. Okay? Refurbishing systems, 15 to 25%. All right, you have an elevated level of need here, but nothing too serious. 25 to 45, you're starting to replace systems. You're not just maintaining them, you are replacing systems at that level. Okay? 45 to 60%, your building should be considered for a major renovation. Anything above 60, your building should be considered for closing and replacement. This is what the Upper Darby Facility Assessment and the FCI Condition Index Store is telling us. So, the chart on the left is highlighting your facilities from the high school down through the kindergarten center. You can see the Facility Condition Index along the right-hand side. What is this telling us? This is telling us that your district is perfectly average. I know we all like to be exceptional in so many ways, but you should take comfort that being perfectly average is great, because your district is within the same Facility Condition Index range as many other or average other Pennsylvania districts with facilities of similar age and size. So you're right where you should be, you're falling right within that mid-range, where you're starting to have to replace some of the systems, and maybe you're considering either a major renovation in some of your facilities. And you can see that when you start to compare your facilities against that chart.
Not that I want to add any jokes to this or extend any longer. Is this where you ask, is at the end when we check out if we want to add any additional, like warranties?
It is. I have the contract right here for you. Okay, so just to help contextualize this a little bit more, let's talk about like regionally. So the National Center of Educational Statistics released a study. That study showed that school districts in the northeastern part of this state generally are older and have a higher FCI range than districts throughout the rest of the country. Of note, in the northeast, the average score is 46%. So your district of these facilities is below average for most of the school districts within the northeastern part of the United States. So what do we do with all this information? So much data, how do we even start to think about, you know, putting our arms around it? And traditionally, when districts order a summary like this, you are getting like 600 pages in a volume. And we have asked ourselves, you know, how can we carry our process and your data into your future long-term plans? Because traditionally, it feels like this is where we kind of all put our pencils down. But here, SiteLogic, Schrader Group, T&amp;M, this is for us the beginning of a new conversation. It is an opportunity, and for us, it is a jumping off point, specifically for your facility's maintenance. The way that SiteLogic helps carry your vision and your goals of your district into the future is by populating a specialized database with all of the individual facility improvement measures we identified in the assessment process. We're picking up where that study leaves off, we're providing longevity to those current concerns and conversations regarding your facilities, and we're charting a path through the years and identifying the different phases of design and execution with real-time accessibility. So what you're seeing is a cloud-based software that we are populating for your administration to have access to. I will not demonstrate it live, because it's currently being built, but what I'd like to do is share with you just a few dashboards that you will have access to as far as your facilities are concerned. It's a login page, you can see my login right there. And whenever you enter into the site, you will be filled with, or you'll have access to these interactive dashboards. This is a sample district, but you can see a lot of different types of information that we have collected and populated for your facilities. So you'll be able to sort and select based on facility type, elementary, high school, middle school, and all of the facility maintenance costs that we were just talking about will start to be kind of broken down. So you can look at your square footage per facility, you can look at where you might need to make investments in different types of facility systems. Across the bottom there is a timeline populated with the budgets based on availability. And then, we also have created that pie chart. This will be interactive, but based on the different type of funding mechanisms that you'd like to allocate towards your facility maintenance, we can tie that together with it. This is just another example, one of many different types of dashboards and interfaces, where you can start to see detailed facility information. This one is for a high school, and it captures all of that facility information on a single page. It is web-based, so Tim and Marvin can take their phones or their iPads and walk through the facilities, pull it up, interact with it, and verify a lot of the information that we presented here tonight. Additionally, they'll have access to floor plans, drawings, photographic information, operations and maintenance data, right in a single resource, where it's convenient. So that is all that I have as far as your facility assessment. Next steps for us, I know Rose wanted to speak to those.
I think we should just throw it back out if there's any, any questions before we talk about next steps.
I have just one question, it's regarding the website. And once again, you'll have to turn around and then look at me, because the microphone's in front. The website, is that included in the cost, or is there an annual kind of membership fee for that, for, you know, Mr. Rogers, Mr. Lee, to access, like every year? Is there an additional cost to that for us?
Sorry, no, there's no additional cost, because that was included with the fee.
And how long does that last? Is that just, it's just the information's not updated, or we update that information?
So, that is a really good question. The way that the MySiteIQ works is that we will be meeting regularly with your district facility team to make updates to the system that they will interface with. We were just talking about that. I think we're probably going to start meeting quarterly to make sure that we are on the same page, to get that initial snapshot of your district. And as facilities, maintenance projects are put in place or prioritized, we will make those updates.
All right, if there's no other questions. So some of the next steps that we're looking at, and I realize this was a lot of information to digest, those were big numbers to absorb, but how we have to look at it now is we start, now the work begins, as Melissa said, we start diving into all those assessment items and really looking at them at a broader level. We're going to attend walkthroughs with Marvin and his team, and really go dive into all the items and determine, you know, what has to occur, first, second, third, and start prioritizing things. When it comes to adding the information into the MySiteIQ, this will allow you to start cherry picking everything. So instead of just looking at the grand total number and going, oh my God, this is going to cost us millions of dollars, you start cherry picking items, and because it's interactive, you can, you're literally able to click on a school, on the assessment items, and go, okay, this is year one, what do we, what do we want to budget for facility improvements? If it's $2 million, you start ticking off items that are going to get you that $2 million. You go over, you take them back off the list, they move to year two, three, and so forth, and down, and down the road. Did I explain that correctly? We'll also, we also want to develop an operative, operations preventive maintenance schedule, so that you'll know when these projects occur. And then, of course, we want to coordinate your maintenance with your district's Facilitron usage reservation system that Marvin uses.
All right, thank you very much for another detailed presentation. Any comments from board members? We'll start on my end. Anyone on this end have any?
No, I really liked the website, and I want to make sure the board, I think, I want to continue to give the resources to our administration, that they have access to something like this, even year, 10 years down the line, that we continue to update, and that way they can make, I think the data collection, this is amazing, and the dashboard, and I think we can become very efficient in how we prioritize different projects. And I want to make sure as a board, and I think we do, we prioritize giving them the resources and tools to do their jobs the most efficiently as possible.
Any other feedback from board members?
Just want to, I just to laugh, this is not a Home Depot shopping list, Dr. McGary.
Yeah, so many years ago, those who were not here, when we tried, there were folks involved previously for this, and, you know, it's unfortunate, but at that time, a board member told an administrator who was tasked with this that what you provided to us is a Home Depot shopping list. So compliments to you, it's far exceeds, and we're going back eight or nine, 10 years ago, that comment that was made by a board member, I think Ms. Mitchell was referring back to that historical time when, when these efforts were there. To David, to your point, and I don't want to have this come across the wrong way, but SiteLogic is also kind of on board helping us shepherding projects. So the question I know you're getting at is like, what's the cost? Well, SiteLogic is also going to be benefiting, I would say, for lack of a better term, that by helping us with this software, they're going to be on board helping us with projects, and that's where some of that information from the financial part comes from. It's to their benefit, I would argue, that this software is available to us, because then they're tied into helping with these projects long-term as well. Is that fair?
I just had to lighten the mood, because everyone looks tired, and I know we're ready to wrap up.
Should know that I said that to the administration a few, a few months ago, when this came forward.
Any other feedback from board members? Seeing none, we can move, all right, Director Disnoirs?
I would just like to thank the four of you for two excellent presentations and tons and tons of work on behalf of our district, and all those, and obviously, the supporting cast behind the scenes at your organizations. Thank you.
I believe we are ready to move on to agenda item number three.
Yeah, so if we can, members of the board, we're going to let you guys go home. We'll answer any questions that come up, and if we can't answer, we'll get back to you, we'll provide that to the public. But I think it's, I appreciate your time and effort and what you guys did, and I appreciate it.
So Marvin, you can jump right into the next presentation.
Thank you. By the way, I did a practice run, it was about three minutes, so we're going to be getting out of this room very quickly. All right, good evening, everyone. My name is Marvin Lee from the Operations Division. The last section of our agenda tonight is an informational presentation about water testing results. To prevent exposure to lead contamination in the drinking water in Pennsylvania schools, the public school code was amended in June of 2018. The Act 39 of 2018 stipulates the regulations around drinking water testing. The Act encourages, not mandates, schools to test lead and copper levels in the drinking water once a year. If the school district does not test the water once a year, we are required to hold public meetings, but obviously, we are doing the testing. We are collecting water samples from five different locations at each school. So we have 14 schools and five locations, a total, 70 total samples. There are kitchen, nurse's office, first floor water fountain, second floor water fountain, and one more time from the same first floor water fountain. We collect 250 meters from each faucet, and the water must sit in the pipe We collect 250 meters from each faucet and the water must sit in the pipe at least for eight hours and put no lead on that, no more than 18 hours. After we collect the water samples, we hand the water samples to Aqua for analysis. The EPA threshold for lead is .015 milligram per liter and the threshold for copper is 1.3 milligram per liter. The operations team is happy to report that lead was detected, no lead was detected in all 70 locations that we tested and the copper level were below the EPA threshold in all 70 locations that we tested. As you can see, no lead or copper levels are above the EPA threshold over the last three years and beyond. For your information, the copper threshold is 1.3 milligram per liter and average detection rate this year was .3 milligram per liter. And just for your reference, last year's average was .31 milligram per liter, pretty The last slide is about the copper in the drinking water. You can easily find these kind of reports online, but the, this article basically says the small amount of copper is essential to good health and the FDA Food and Drug Administration recommends dietary allowance of two milligrams of copper a day. So basically the message is that our students and parents should not be concerned about a small amount of copper that we detect in our, in our building because they're safe. This concludes my presentation and I'll take any questions.
He, he did not lie. Three minutes, two and a half.
All right. Wonderful presentation, Marvin. Do we have any other, well, any other, do we have any feedback from board members at this time? Director Neal?
I'm, I'm sorry. I feel like I'm asking something. It's just a clarification. On the water test, it says a reporting limit. Is that, does that mean when it's below it, that's not detected then? Like that's the minimum number? So, so for example, on the reporting limits for copper, it's, it's 0.25 on the, on the reports that were sent out. One was reporting limit 0.05. Like it changes? So like, what does that mean? What is reporting limit?
The reporting limit, based on what I understood from Aqua is that every time they have to retest, they have to dilute the water. So the reporting limit changes every time we have to retest and add more. That's what I, they told me. Every time they have to retest the same sample, they do, the dilution rate is different. So that's why the reporting limit is, becomes different.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other feedback from board members at this time? Seeing none, I believe we are ready to move on to the final agenda item for this evening.
Thank you, Director Warsevich. The final agenda item is policies. There are two policies under consideration this evening. Policy 011, Principles for Governance and Leadership, and policy 810, Transportation. And I should just take this opportunity to mention that policy numbers below 100 deal with how the board functions and operates and is set up. And they are referred, referred to as BOGS, Board Operation, Operating Guidelines. So the, the, the two policies, policy 011 is Principles for Governance and Leadership. The PSBA updated their principles for governance and leadership and the board is adopting with these updates, the updated Principles for Governance and Leadership. And I will double check, there was something in the information from PSBA that with the board's approval of these new principles, PSBA can send a poster-sized version of them to the district for the school board members to sign and the poster can be posted on the wall of a school if we so wish. I have to double check that's, to make sure that's, that's indeed the case. And the update to policy 810 is updates have been made to policy references. So more information about updates to these policies and the policies from the Education and People's Services Meeting can be found in the summary of policy changes document posted to the policy agenda items for each meeting in board docs. That concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Director Disnoyers. Do we have any feedback from members of the board at this time? Alrighty, seeing none, I believe now is the time for public comment. As Dr. McGary mentioned earlier, priority will be given to those physically present. If you are so inclined, please come to the mic, state your name, your address, and the specific agenda item number you will be addressing. Do we have anyone physically present who would like to make public comment at this time?
Moving up. Can't even see it. Good evening, Edward Ganges, 1905 Green Hill Road, Lansdowne, PA. This is to the new school and the maintenance agendas. I'm not sure if it's one or two, but there you guys have it. Honestly, I just have to say, as a community member, citizen, sitting here watching you guys do all this hard, high-quality work is, is, it's, it's just a pleasure. Thank you so much to the board, all of you directors for the amount of time you put in, the amount of information you have to consider, the hard, just the amount of hard work it must take to balance so many moving parts across the district, not just about facilities as covered tonight, but honestly, all the different layers from the presentation with the kids and how you're planning for their future, dealing with teacher crises, budget shortfalls, new schools to be built, current schools to be maintained, you know, parent feedback. Thank you, thank you so much. It's, it's, it's a really a pleasure to be able to sit here and, and just see you do such great work and get an appreciation of how hard your job is and, and the great work that you do. So thank you for that. Honestly, you guys ask great questions to our guests. As a community member, the only thing that I was left worrying it was, how much does a new school cost? It looked like it could fluctuate anywhere from $50 million to $500 million, depending on which site you pick, how big the school is, whether it's in 600 new seats, whether it's 1,200 new seats, whether we own the land or whether, whether the district owns the land, whether the township owns the land, is the township going to gouge us? Just all of that. So that was the only thing as a, a, a community member, looking at the slides and thinking back and debating it across the table, I don't have information on. So ball parking that for us would be extremely helpful, but aside from that, it looks like you got a multi-year, a lot of work cut out ahead of you for balancing these schools. Of special note, I want to make a shout out to Director Neal on the Clifton Heights Middle School conversation and considerations, you know, pushing in on that also added a lot of new context that was not included in the slides and we appreciate that as, as members of the community as well. So again, just thank you very much for all the hard work and, you know, I'm just thrilled that we're in such good hands and that you guys are doing such detailed, deep dive work. So that's all I have to add. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ganges. Dan, did you want to speak to any of the?
I can guarantee it, it won't be 500 million. Pretty sure about that. And I, I think I'm going to help Dan save his breath. The initial price, every time, like our two big projects or three big projects that we, we have right now, we had the initial price. And then that price changed because of delays, because of a pandemic and things like that. And so you can get a ballpark now, it's worth the paper's written on. Honest, I mean, it, it doesn't mean it's not a fair effort, it's just that things, delays happen or, or the environment changes and two years later it's 10 million more, 20 million more, and that's just, or, or you're, or you're excavating the, the sewer management and you're discovering new things and it just, there's a cost now there that wasn't there before. And that's just how, that's how it works. That's just, that's how it is. So a huge grain of salt with any kind of introductory price that is proposed. So I, I'm actually, I, I don't need a price right now, we're still in the beginning stages anyway. So, thanks.
Do we have any other members of the public who might like to make comment who are physically present? Seeing none, Ms. Buford, do we have anyone who has made any kind of electronic comment?
I will try. I think someone else will have to say it for me.
Now, there are, there are no other additional comments at this time. Or questions.
Good job, Dan.
Thank you very much. Mr. Rogers, would you mind giving us a once-over of the agenda items for this evening? And I believe at least one or two of them will require some kind of board consideration.
Sure. So again, we have four items, two will consider, will need board consideration. So I'll go through, if it needs board consideration, we'll stop and see how the board would like to move forward. The first agenda item which will require board action was the long-range planning. This is the presentation where Schrader Group and TN, TNM Engineering presented the building capacity analysis and recommendations for our long-range plan. The ask from the administration after seeing the presentation is to give the administration the authorization to further explore the recommended property at Marshall Road and explore the possibility of going down the path of building an elementary school there and also asking the board to move the act, the finalized report forward for a resolution just to approve and accept the full report. So at this time, if the board would like to weigh in.
All right. Do we have a consensus from the board to move those things forward?
Yes.
Director Neal has a comment?
I mean, I, I would rather move forward with a resolution stating that I'm, it's open to all possibilities. You're, you're, you're allowing the administration, I mean, you're, you're talking about just Marshall Road? Is it what you said? What?
We're asking, we're asking for the board to give us authorization to explore Marshall Road as the, which is the site that was the recommendation out of the presentation. Aside from that, the, the board and the school district hired Schrader, SiteLogic, TNM to produce the report. There'll be a right, a resolution for the board accepting the finalized report in, as it stood and how it was presented tonight. Not that you're, you know, making a decision on the path to go forward, but that's the formal acceptance, similar to Dan speaking to PlanCon. When you go through and do your facility study, you want the board to accept the facility study as it completed, right? That's the last step. The recommendation out of tonight's presentation was to explore, you know, the possibility of Marshall Road field. And that's what we're asking for the board to give the administration the ability to go down that path.
It doesn't preclude us from looking at, if the board wants us to go to what Dr. Head said, we also like you to explore building a school on Cardington or knocking down, as you said, David, both Bywood and Stonerunson, building bigger schools. All we're saying is we need your permission. I need your permission to go and talk to the township about this real estate piece. Without your permission, I really shouldn't be going out there and having discussions about trying to get properties or not get properties. And in fairness to the township, we should have this formal understanding that we're trying to work out that piece of it. What, what Craig is talking about as well is very important. That software that you were, you were questioning and you were asking about, historically, we were thrown out of a PlanCon process many years ago trying to build on Cardington School because at that time, the district did not have an up-to-date, recently board-approved full facility study. We were, in my opinion, as an administrator in a different role at that time, somewhat misled that we were be, we could be okay and still put in the process, only to find out that wasn't the case. The software that we are getting with this will allow us to update our information so frequently and so much that it's almost like an automatic facility study all the time, that in communication with SiteLogic and Schrader Group, who are experts in this area, it would allow us to have a, on-the-spot facility study completed if PlanCon gets turned back on for reimbursement. So what you're approving is that study that they did that we need to have in our back pocket in case PlanCon gets turned on, that we have it there. And then that software that, that, part of this that will allow us to keep that up-to-date. Also, an approval for me specifically to engage in a conversation with the township about whether or not Marshall Road's even an, an opportunity. It does not preclude this board from saying to the administration, we also want you to still exploring these other locations to build a school, if that makes sense.
Yeah. My concern is if during the conversation, you know, you're, you're not able to talk about 69th Street because the resolution stated that you can only discuss Marshall Road.
There is no resolution saying that and we, and we, and we've.
Isn't, isn't that what we're trying to move forward to vote on? So what would that resolution say then specifically? If, if, I don't know if Kyle has some language, because I don't want to preclude any sort of options that would hinder the district in the, in any sort of conversation that it couldn't be on the table because the school board did not authorize him to discuss it.
At this point, the administration, from what I understand, is simply looking for authorization to, sorry, not authorization, is looking for a resolution that would accept the facility study. It's not doing anything more than that at this point. The administration is also looking for your tacit, not, not overt approval to look into various options for how to accomplish whatever is in the facility study. And there are multiple options in there.
So there would be no vote at the next meeting regarding the board's approval of, of Dr. McGary working with the township? Is that correct? So it's just next week, next meeting, there's only going to be the, the acceptance of this report?
As far as I understand at this point, but if, I mean, that may change after further discussions, but it's my understanding at this point, we're simply looking to have the board approve the facility study that was done and accept it.
Yeah, and I'm totally for that, but then there was, Mr. Rogers stated, and the board's approval to.
Explore.
Explore.
Explore that.
Elementary options.
Nothing done in the behind the scenes, that we are, based on this recommendation, looking at Marshall Road in particular, so that there is no hidden idea that we are going to be talking to the township about that. We've already had conversations about Marshall Road with the township, both past and present, I'm sorry, 69th Street. I don't think it was, at least in my opinion, in meeting with the professionals, building a school on 69th Street is nearly impossible to do in the current environment with a flood plain. So we're limited to Cardington and Marshall Road. And so I believe that we do need approval, I would like approval from this group to say to me, we're okay with you talking about some type of real estate discussion with Marshall Road. I appreciate Kyle talking about it that way, but I'm, I'm looking at for some of that. Go ahead.
All right. So, I mean, the, I wouldn't necessarily go overboard with that. Instead, what I would do is something like that the board of school directors resolves to accept the facility study and that the administration is authorized to take appropriate steps to explore the implementation of that study. So you're not, you, you are simply authorized to move forward with it.
I just want to be, again, with everybody here, I just don't want there to be a situation where it wasn't like we discussed this idea of going and talking about that piece, that's all. That's my concern.
I was just going to say, as the recommended course of action, it would be natural for administration to first work on the Marshall Road field possibility. And if obstacle, insurmountable obstacles were encountered, administration could come back to the board and say, we've met insurmountable options, what else should we consider? That would be a reasonable approach to me. I'm, I'm not, and, and I think, I think that is a reasonable way to move forward. And David, hope, Director Neal, hopefully that meets your needs.
But that's not even what we're saying, right? I just want to say that I think the report is very clear that really the only option that will meet our needs.
that will meet our needs is either to build an additional school at Cardington and Hillcrest Elementary School, who cannot handle the traffic flow situation, or a school on the Marshall Road field. And given the condition of our buildings and the amount of money that we would be spending over the next 10 years, or 20 years potentially, honestly, I don't see how we could consider two schools. And we're building a middle school, and all of these condition assessments. So I would wholeheartedly support us exploring and seeing if it's an option to build on Marshall Road field.
None of this is, like, we're treating this as if this is a vote on the decision, and it's not. All we're saying is, yes, please go talk to the township about Marshall Road. We are not closing any doors.
Correct. We simply, based on a review of everything, both what Dr. Hag, Board Member Disnoyers and Mitchell said, is the administration has done this work with this professional group. The best location for us to solve the problems that we can financially is Marshall Road, right now. If we had all the money in the world, maybe a different conversation. With all the facilities issues we have, and I will answer a question that was earlier out there, it's about 350 to 400 hours a square foot currently, is what we were talking about, about building a school. So in a Marshall Road school of that size, anywhere from 45 to 55 million dollars for that elementary school. Compared to a middle school, that latest costs were somewhere around 90 million to build the Clifton Heights Middle School. So when you add the cost of those two schools, plus the other facilities issues, we have to figure out, how do we spread this money out not to cripple the taxpayers here to do it? So our administrative recommendations is clear for me. Accept this study, so we can move forward to try to do this work, and we have that ongoing. Allow me, as Dr. Hag said, to at least talk to the township in a formal way about Marshall Road, because that is the best option, the administration feels, to solve some of the current elementary issues. Is it perfect? No. Could we still explore 69th Street down the line or something else? Sure. But right now, we've got to try to capture what we can, much like to your earlier comment, David, or it's going to be another three or four years before any movement takes place. And that's why we brought it to you this way.
Yeah, my, this is my concern. I don't want, four months down the line, you're coming to the board, asking us permission to talk about 69th Street again. Yeah, just to break into the conversation here, I just want to make sure that, to reiterate the point, that this is a consensus. And while we appreciate everyone's individual opinion, not that it's devalued or anything, we need to have these conversations, we also need to make the best use of our and the public's time, and we need to make sure that it is a group decision. So I would like to, whatever the verbiage is to call the question, I would like to just move on and see if there is a group consensus at this time. Do we have a consensus to move the discussion forward?
Yes.
I need to say something, okay? And I apologize, but we need to have consensus on what we're moving forward. So that's why I'm asking questions. So I'm gonna say no, I don't, there's not a consensus for me.
If you want to read again, the statement is pretty clearly written out on the summary document, so you could...
Yeah, but I am utilizing the public's time appropriately by asking questions and making sure that the resolution that we're discussing at a committee meeting, which we're working and discussing, that we will need to have a vote on at the next meeting, that we're clear on actually what we're gonna see.
The resolution has nothing to do with what we're authorizing, there's two separate things. The resolution's just about accepting the report, and the report's the report.
Okay, so I heard two resolutions earlier. Okay.
The next agenda item was the condition assessment report, where SiteLogic presented the results of the comprehensive building assessment and reviewed where we stand as far as the building envelope, the maintenance, the equipment. This is just informational, and the presentation also included the FCI for each building, and also included how we move forward, and everything will be tracked and maintained through their system. Agenda item number three was the report on the annual water testing, also informational. Mr. Lee provided an update as it relates to the district's annual water testing, analysis, and results, and the current reporting requirements under Act 39 of 2018. Agenda item number four is policy, which is board action. We have Policy 011, Principles of Governance and Leadership, and Policy 810, Transportation, and if the board wants to comment there.
Do we have a consensus to move that forward?
Yes.
Yes.
That concludes the agenda.
And I hand the meeting back over to President Brown.
Thank you, Director War Savage. A motion is in order for the adjournment of the Finance and Operations Committee meeting. Thank you, Don. All those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.